Chloe had killed the dog during the attack. I discussed with Mr. Nichols the ten day quarantine as mandated by law. I also talked about how I believed Chloe was extremely animal aggressive and felt that Chloe should be muzzled at all times and to always be restrained by means of a leash by someone who could handle Chloe's strength. He told me he would consider muzzling Chloe and I believe he suggested he'd be working with a trainer to help Chloe's issues. I said that I thought a muzzle would work, but I also believe that Chloe's issues and dog aggressiveness could not be trained away by any trainer. I also brought up my concern with Chloe being so animal aggressive and knew that in the surrounding neighborhood, there were many pets. At the time, I was unaware of how many children lived where in the neighborhood. In conclusion, I told Mr. Nichols I would be forwarding my report to the police chief and the town manager to see if they felt that this incident mandated a dangerous dog hearing. And that's where we are today.
Thank you, Tac. So do any members of the board have questions before we get to?
Sure. How long has Chloe lived in Acton?
Sorry, I just have to go up to the microphone and just press a button to turn it on, please. If you could just identify yourself.
Can you just press a button to turn the microphone on? No, there's like a circular button with a face on it.
It's on the base, on the base of the, at the bottom, you see the circle. Just push it down and it will turn red.
That's not working. That's not great. Do we, how about our TV audience? Can you?
Hi. Do you want me to answer? We've owned, we rescued Chloe about two and a half years ago, little more than two and a half years ago. That's how long she's been with us.
Sure. And what's her behavior been like in the time you've had her? And how comfortable are you with her?
She is the most loving dog in the world if you only have two legs. She loves all people, including children, very good with children, very good with everybody. But she is, has a really strong prey drive and I did work with her with a trainer several times when we first got her and her response is lessened, but we just decided it would be easier to keep her away from other dogs so we don't go to dog parks. She's very old right now and she only walks like two yards worth and back. So we're very careful. And what happened that day is, to the best of my knowledge, since I wasn't there, is my son had taken her into this, he looked in the store window, which wasn't really sufficient to check whether the other dog was there. He knew the owners had a dog, so that was a mistake. And he didn't have her prong collar on her. And she has to have that on if she's going to be controlled. And when he reached to go out the door, she lunged and the leash went out of his hands. So the prong collar is absolutely necessary and he had not put it on her that day. So unfortunately, this is what happened. We've made amends with the owners of the store. We'll get another dog in time and we've financially compensated them for that. But Chloe just can't be around other dogs and we keep her away from other dogs.
I'd say I feel for you, I mean, and your son and the, and the other dog's owners. It's all around a very difficult situation.
I'd also like to add that we got her through petfinder.com, so she was a rescue from down around Webster, Oxford area. And she had, they had her for three months of rehab as well as in a foster home with other dogs. In other words, they kind of vetted her for acceptability into family life before they posted, you know, her adoption on there. And we have, what can I say for this incident? But before that and after that, we've taken the steps not to walk her near other dogs, to isolate her. And certainly since that incident, she is never with other dogs, ever. You know, we don't, you know, we don't walk her, we keep her in the yard, we walk her at off hours because we know the neighborhood, we've had two other dogs prior to her. We've lived in that neighborhood for 20 years, so we know the other dogs and the other families in the streets very well. And, you know, understand the circumstances and understand that the kind of dog she is, but at the same time, understand that she's a, a really kind and dog with people. She has, she's very domesticated and she is a terrier.
And we don't, we don't, we don't know what kind of life she had before we got her. It was clear she'd had many litters. She was probably used as a breeder because she has a really desirable color of coat. And then she was either turned out when she couldn't breed anymore or escaped, but she was a stray when she was found.
Other questions, board members? Yep, Jane's in.
So I guess based on your description, there have been previous incidents with other animals involving Chloe while you owned her?
No. We just, I just know from having tried to take her on walks, the biggest problem in walking in our conservation land is she'll be on a leash, at least when she was younger and could walk better, she's pretty old right now, is other dogs who are not leashed would run up to her and other people did not have control of their dog. So my biggest fear was somebody with a dog not on a leash and I would, you know, call out to them, say, could you please leash your dog? My dog is very dog aggressive. And sometimes they would say, oh, my dog's fine. I go, no, you don't understand, my dog is not. And so people call their dogs and as soon as they see another dog, they go running for her. That's my biggest problem. So that's how I knew she was aggressive to other dogs.
But in the past, you've been able to keep her from attacking other dogs or at least injuring them in those kinds of situations?
Yes. We, we have a short inch thick, heavy duty leash. We have a prong collar that she wears. She's always, we bought that with her. So that's when she's responded, she responds to that. I mean, she'll obey commands, she'll sit, she'll stay beside us and the rest. It's just when a dog comes close to her, she will react. And I think when Tac came over to our house and visited, you saw she was just sitting there, she ignored you practically. And just, you know, when we talked about terriers and I remember the conversation well and just, yes, they are terriers, but I believe one thing you said is this is pretty much what you expected around the house and away from other dogs, she was fine. But, you know, outside, yes, we did have to take those precautions, which is what we've been doing.
Since we first got her, you know, we did that. And, you know, William just made two mistakes that day and they were, really was a horrible result.
And then I guess my second question is, when your son was attempting to leave, it says in the police report, your son was attempting to leave video signals when the attack happened. My assumption is that he was attempting to remove the dog from the premises.
Absolutely. He had looked in and he didn't see the owner's dog, but what he should have done is left her in the car, gone in, made sure that there was no other dog there, then go out and get her because he's visited with them many times and they like Chloe. She's, she's very friendly to people. But he didn't look well enough and he didn't have the prong collar on her, which makes it, she would, you know, try to hang herself to get to another dog probably. It's a fear-based and a predator response.
Okay.
Peter.
The materials we have here say that Tac asked you at one point to muzzle, muzzle your dog when he was outside and that happened for a while, but, but you're not doing it anymore?
We, we, okay, I'm sorry. It was one of the suggestions that he had. We looked into muzzles at that point, but what we had determined that we do not walk her near any dogs. We don't go out when there's other dogs. She's, you know, when we know there's a, in fact, you know, some friend is going to be visiting with a dog this weekend, we're arranging for Chloe to be out of the house. You know, just we isolate her, we keep her quiet, you know, we keep her away from, from that. It's as much for her sake, you know, as anyone's because we don't want her to get stirred up, we don't want her to get piled up, you know, for it and nervous. She's not, it's hard to say, but she's not the, she's not the usual aggression, snarling, hackles up. She's just very quiet, you can see, but she's very intense on that, so we know the signs on.
How much does a dog weigh?
Forty-five point three pounds took her to the vet today.
And you walk around your neighborhood on a leash, you're saying?
Yeah, she can, she can walk maybe about two people's front yards worth. She's, she's pretty arthritic, so she doesn't want to walk very much.
And how about children? How, how, small children?
She's wonderful with children. These dogs were actually bred as nanny dogs, guard dogs for the family, and I've seen her around small. She has never exhibited an ounce of aggression toward another human being and if she did, we would not own her. We really would not.
In fact, part of the, the reasons for the circumstances is William had taken her to stores in Maynard, you know, down to the card shop over the video signals several times and he had felt comfortable and the store owners had felt comfortable having the dog in, in the, in their locale until the circumstance. Obviously, we haven't brought her back. Boy, I was, I was going to, I forgot I was going to add something to that in terms of the reflection.
I don't have any further questions.
Janet?
Well, eventually it would happen. You know, everybody else is asking questions and I start thinking about things. When, you said that she's very, has a very strong prey instinct. What does she do? I mean, I know you said she lunges, but does she, she open her mouth or does she?
Oh, God, she would attack to kill, absolutely. And that's exactly what she did with this dog.
Okay. And then when you said you took her for training, what, what did that consist of?
I had a trainer who owned pit bulls come and do training in our neighborhood with me. We were trying to desensitize her to, like there would be a dog tied up or a dog, you know, that we could see in the distance. And he would work with her to, you know, get her in control if she was hyper alert. She gets hyper alert. Then the last training we did was, he has a pit bull that's like rock solid. This dog would do a down stay and he worked her around his dog on a long leash until she could get close enough to his dog to actually touch the dog. And it was like a new world. She was like, oh my God, I might be able to actually play with this thing and, you know, but she couldn't sustain it, you know, she, she just couldn't. But it took 45 minutes for him to work her around his dog, for her to be able to get up to the dog. And that was when I just said, you know, it will take so many hours of training to desensitize her that, and it's partly her breed. She, she, they just do, most dogs have a very strong prey drive, but hers is very evident. And we've had, we had labs in the past that would be in the woods with us and one of them ran and killed a mongoose and dropped it at Harold's feet, whatever, what was, a muskrat, sorry, not a mongoose. And I said, that's right, wrong continent, big brat-like thing. And, you know, they do, they're, they're animals with prey drives. Hers is very strong and the trainer thought it was probably also very fear-based that, who knows what she saw? I don't think she was a fighting dog because she would be a lot more torn up. Her ears are fine, she, she has a scar down her muzzle, but I don't think it came from another dog. So we did work with her and, you know, my conclusion was it would take so many hours, it's just not going to work. So we just don't go to dog parks. I no longer walk her in the woods because of other people's dogs being off-leash. And it's, that's just, we walk her in the neighborhood.
A couple more questions. One is, does it matter the size of the four-legged or whatever, the non-human? I mean, I gathered that this, the victim dog, I guess Vic was, was small, so.
And obviously if she's going after, you know, rodents, they're pretty small. Yeah. The first, no, that was our previous dog, who was a lab. The first time I saw her be aggressive is I thought, oh, it'll be nice, I'll take her down to Fresh Pond and we'll walk because there are lots of people with dogs. What I didn't know is there are lots of peoples with their dogs not on a leash. And this woman got out of a car with what looked like a big boxer mastiff dog, no leash. And I had her on the leash and I said, you know, could you please restrain your dog? My dog is very aggressive to other dogs. And she said, oh, he's fine. And I said, no, no, you don't understand. These are two bully breeds and it will not be good. Oh, he's fine. As this dog started to walk right up to her face and she just gets really quiet, like a stealth missile. And when he got to be like 18 inches away from us, she launched herself onto him. And this was a dog easily three times her size. So I don't think the size matters, she's just not going to be good with other dogs, period.
And then, well, I have one more question. Given that you realize that she will go for the, she'll attack. I mean, she'll be on that collar, which I guess restrains her, but I mean, she apparently doesn't respond to voice commands when she's confronted with a target. That's just what, it just overwhelms her, her, any, whatever training or whatever she's absorbed or any restraint she has is overwhelmed by this instinct to go for the attack. So she doesn't respond to voice commands?
She won't respond to, well, it's a combination of the collar and the leash and leave it. And, you know, I've had her sit and another dog has walked by and then we continue our walk, but they're on the other side of the street. You know, I always warn people, I just go, can't get them together.
Okay, so knowing, the other part of my question was knowing that she will try to attack and you're warning other people, has it occurred to you, given Tac's suggestion and given that, you know, I mean, muzzled, yeah, she could throw herself at another dog, but she's not going to be able to bite unless she's really, really strong and breaks through the, you know, the muzzle. But that would, obviously if you're out there and you're concerned about the safety of the other dogs, that would help to alleviate some of the concern about all these dogs running around. Obviously, if they're aggressive, that's another issue, but that's, you know, that's your concern protecting your dog, but that's also the problem for the owner if something happens because they're not supposed to presumably let their dogs run around, so. But I just wondered if you had ever considered muzzling her?
Yes, we have. We've thought about that and we took the choice, at least at this point, that with the voice and the, with the prong collar, and it was one of those, one of the mistakes that our son had done, was not to have the prong collar, is that she is controlled by that. If you give a jerk and we hold the collar, she does not go because she knows she's got something there. She can feel it. So that's a very effective control. And I guess the other side is, and I agree with you, the last thing we want to do is put her in a situation or put any dog in a situation where it's dangerous. So, and that's why we've restricted her outings in her times to, you know, moment, you know, times in the neighborhood where we know no other dogs are about, or we keep her in the yard, you know, at those times when we need to take her out. I just wanted to add one other thing. We are vetted as family friends over in Boxborough. He's been her vet since we got her two and a half years ago. He knows about the incident, you know, we've talked about it and the rest of it. You know, we'd be glad to get something from him if he wished, but he did not, you know, he recognizes the instinct, the instinctual drive she has, but at no time did he talk to us about her being a danger to other people, you know, on that and just that we have to, you know, continue to work with her and know the kind of dog she is.
Around the muzzle, it's, it's certainly something we could consider. One of the things that it seems to me, you know, we're talking about her interactions with other dogs, but actually they're quite few and far between. I mean, we just, we just don't have encounters with other dogs in the neighborhood. So a muzzle could be more than she needs, especially now that she is so old and just walks a couple, you know, two to three people's front yards and she's done. So it just seemed like overkill, but.
That's a, that's a really bad word.
I know, it's a bad word, bad word, yeah. The incident that day, you know, didn't occur in the street, didn't occur with the right collar, didn't occur with somebody walking her when they had real control over her. So I, I think it might, it's certainly something we can do, it just seems kind of unnecessary. She's, she seems like a really old, arthritic dog.
Or at least to carry it around. I mean, obviously there might be instances where you don't need the collar, the special collar either, but.
Oh, no, we do.
But, you know, I mean, it should be there, you know, along with all the other stuff that dog walkers have to carry, you know, the little bag that they pick up after your dog and whatnot and a little water bowl in the summertime and, you know, treats to reward them and, you know, you basically, it's like having a child, you know, anyhow.
She also has kind of a squished face, you know, and we were told there are muzzles that will fit that face of a dog. It just doesn't seem all that necessary, given the precautions that we're taking with her.
And, but also, you know, we certainly, and thinking about, knowing that this hearing was coming up, you know, and discussing it, realized that might be one of the options. And it's not something that we would necessarily resist if it was, you know, the decision of the committee here that we should have her muzzled when she's outside on a walk, then so be it. Although you've heard our feelings, you know, and our thoughts already.
I have just one more question. How long do Staffordshire terriers live typically? What's their longevity?
About 11 to 12 years. Again, this is, we've had dogs, we've had three labs in the past, labs mixes, and this time we wanted to, you know, do a rescue, you know, to take care of a dog and that's why we brought her into our house. And, you know, had visited, done, we just didn't go to the shop, we walked with her, we kind of did a home visit, you know, talked to the people. We were also interviewed, it might as well have been a Cory background check, the way that the people checked it out, but we thought that this was something that we really wanted to do and to care for her, you know, through this. And we've seen that, as we've said, you know, her arthritis has been rampant for this and so it's progressing.
The only reason that I even would consider having a pit bull terrier, which is what she is, in the house is that my, our daughter, our adult daughter volunteered at Angel Memorial Shelter for a couple of years. And she, and many of the dogs that are turned in there are pit bulls of some kind or another. And she said, Mom, they are the nicest dogs. They're so gentle, they're really wonderful. And so partly because of her experience, you know, when we first went to visit the home where she was being fostered in, Laura and Harold and I went together to look at her and she greeted us all, she was all excited. And then she came and she sat down in my lap. And that was our first experience with her. And we took her for a walk and, you know, we had just lost our five-year-old lab. She died very suddenly, three weeks, had lymphoma and went. And so we were really in a state of grief and so we thought we'd taken an older dog that would help us and we could help her, so that's why we got her. But Laura's recommendation weighed pretty heavily.
Okay. Well, thank you, that's all for now.
Okay. So I have one, just one question. You mentioned how long they tend to live. How, how old is she, do you know?
I think her ninth year, I guess.
The vet thought she was around seven, you know, when we got her. So she's nine, nine and a half, but it's, there are absolutely no records on her, you know, that way. She did have cancer at the time, but they had treated it and removed the lumps. So, you know, there's, there's that consideration as well as that may well come back at some point. So we're figuring maybe two and a half years for her at the most max.
So I'd like to ask if there are any other people here who'd like to speak about this or have any questions in the audience, who can just come up and take the, yeah, if you could just leave that there, if you don't mind. Yep, if we have any other questions. If you could just state your name and address, please.
I'm Steve Myers and I live at 26 Duggan Road, right next door. I'm being put into a very difficult situation here. I have a six-year-old and four-year-old daughters that are afraid of dogs. And this, this has stressed me out. I mean, I don't know how many of you have kids and when you feel like there's even the smallest bit of threat to your child, you have this feeling in your stomach and you're up all night thinking about scenarios that could happen. And this has been stressful for my family. I, I'm not here to start a war with my neighbors. This, I, they've been nothing but great people. I, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm in an awkward situation. My kids are afraid of dogs. If this dog gets loose, I, by their own accord, they have no history on this dog. They don't know if it's ever been aggressive to humans. They don't know how many times it's attacked or even injured another dog. And they've repeatedly just talked about how aggressive it's been to other animals. I don't think there's anyone, Tac, I'm sure won't sit here and tell me that if my four-year-old kid is outside, and meanwhile, our house is 30 feet away from them. My kids are outside 30 feet away from their house, if not closer. Right now, I take them in the house if I see the, the dog come outside. I, I've moved, their favorite place to play in my yard was right, right along our property border. I had a playhouse there, I've moved it to the back of the house, they don't even use it anymore. Their favorite tree to climb is right there. They don't even, I don't let them go into the tree anymore because all I can think about is if, once again, the dog gets loose and all of a sudden, my kid freaks out and starts running, screaming. Everything anyone has ever been taught about dogs is you don't just go running and screaming away from them. As much as I've tried to coach them not to do that, they're going to do that. And I don't think there's anyone in here that's going to tell me that, that can guarantee me that that won't be a trigger to set this dog off. I mean, again, repeatedly, they've talked about how it's lunged at other animals. What if it's my kid? What if it's my four-year-old daughter and this thing clamps onto it? My kid's dead. It's not about whether or not the, the dog feels bad about it or the family feels bad about another dog being injured. My kid's dead. I don't want to be the case study for whether or not this, this dog is human aggressive.
I'm Joan Kellogg, I live at 27 Duggan Road. I didn't get a notice about this meeting, which disappointed me. I'm only two houses down, across the street. I don't have any children now, living at home. I don't have any dogs, but I do have grandchildren with dogs that visit me and their little dogs. I have a son that visits from Florida with a Chihuahua. When I take that dog for a walk, after learning about what happened to this dog in Maynard, I'm petrified. I don't want to go by that house. If that dog locked onto Rachel, she's dead. And I might be dead too because I was right in the midst of it. When they first got this dog, Ms. Nichols came by my house to introduce me to Chloe. And at that time, she told me it had been abused. They didn't know how it was abused, but she said that it still had buckshot inside it. This concerns me. What did that dog go through before they rescued it? What might trigger this dog to attack a child? A child, a two-year-old, is not much bigger than a little dog. And like Ms. Myers said, when they approach a dog, sometimes they start screaming and jumping up and down and waving their arms, which would trigger a dog to go after it. Muzzling, to me, is the least they can do to keep our neighborhood safe.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Foley, 25 Duggan Road. I live right across the street. I have to say that it's hard for me to believe that they have not muzzled their dog. It was suggested to muzzle the dog and they just didn't do it. So I really, it's. So I really, it's hard to explain why they wouldn't do it. If there's even a chance, what if the dog just gets out? What if someone, what if the latch on the door is left open or something, and the dog just runs out? Who's to say what the dog's going to do? Let alone muzzling it when they take it for a walk, which they won't even do. I think they should muzzle it when it's in the house. I mean, if the dog escapes and those kids are outside playing, I fear for what will happen. And the whole thing about not being human aggressive, my daughter was a dog walker for a few years, and she was a big defender of pit bulls. And she walked pit bulls, and she said, "Oh, they just have a bad rap." Well, one day, one of the pit bulls that she was walking, who was not human aggressive, attacked her very seriously. So, maybe not human aggressive today, who knows what will be tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mark Foley, 25 Duggan Road, I'm Deb's husband, and I don't think I can really add much to what Steve said about his two daughters and the safety issues, because that's really what this boils down to. I have a great respect for the love that people have for their pets, but this really old, what'd you say, arthritic dog, four months ago killed another dog, so I don't know if it's aged really quickly in the last four months, but it was pretty aggressive four months ago. And this boils down to who can guarantee that there won't be a trigger that will cause Chloe to attack a small child? Who can guarantee that? So even if it's .0001 probability of occurring, we're not, I don't think anybody's asking that Chloe be euthanized or be sent away, but for the safety of these two small young children that play actually a lot less than 30 feet away, their, their yards are butt, it's so close, why not just simply take the precaution of having a muzzle? The Henrys, they've talked about all the precautions they've now taken, that Chloe killed another dog. I don't think any of us want to be back here in this room talking about their steps that are being taken now that Chloe has killed a young child. Thank you.
If you'd like to, you can go up, but you've got to go up to the microphone.
Steve, I'm, I wish you had talked to us and told us about your fears. I didn't know they existed. I didn't know why you moved your play structure. And your kids have met Chloe.
They, they have.
Well, not when I was with them.
Sorry, we can't do a back and forth like this. You guys have to address us.
Yeah, I'm sorry. All I remember is I was, I had the dog with me, and I did introduce them to her. They didn't freak out in my presence, and we took her back home. It was just a friendly introduction. But I don't think they're afraid of Chloe because of anything Chloe has ever done, so that's not an atypical thing, but I, you never voiced anything, I'm really surprised. And...
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, you guys can't have, if you're, when you speak, you have to address the board.
Anyway, Chloe has been around small children many times, she is not aggressive with them. We were not told to put a muzzle on Chloe. We were told, to my understanding, that there would be this hearing, and that one of the results might be that she would need to wear a muzzle when she was outside. So we were not told to put her in a muzzle, and we refused to do it. We were told, the first statement, we've never seen that statement, have we? That you just read? But you never delivered it to us, did you? You wrote it tonight? Okay. So we've never heard that before. I was kind of surprised about some of the things that were in it. And we were not told to muzzle the dog. We were told there would probably be a hearing, and one of the outcomes could be that the dog, you know, would need to be muzzled when she was outside.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Yep.
Hi, my name's Robert Moran. I live at 8 MacLeod Lane. We share backyards. So my backyard is probably, what, 30, 40 yards from your backyard? Yeah, yeah, we're all, we're all friends, even though we live on different streets. I've got to say, I'm concerned. We have one of those houses, well, first of all, we have an eight-year-old and a 10-year-old, and we have one of those homes where mostly the kids in our street ended up at our house, and my wife ends up cooking dinner for much larger numbers than our family. At any given time, there's usually at least four kids, three or four kids, playing outside, doing whatever. They range from seven years old to 11 years old. And we have two dogs, a 13-year-old lab, and we just picked up a little puppy from Virginia, he's about four months old. And both of these dogs are not only the center of my children's life, but have become the center of the kids on our street. And when they're outside playing, the dogs are part of whatever game or whatever activity they're doing, almost always. And I'm concerned about two things. One, in the event that Chloe does get out, it's been, you mentioned that she can go two yards worth of walking, and we've also seen that, you know, although it was a public place, where I would expect control to be the tightest, I've had dogs my entire life, and you can't control everything all the time. And at that particular time, control is lost. Things are usually a little bit more relaxed at home, I'm worried that control may be lost. Chloe may go the 30 yards into my yard, and, you know, a couple of things could happen. One, my dogs are going to be close to my kids, physically close, and my kids get, get hurt if Chloe attacks my dog. But more likely, some of our neighbors' kids, a little on the older side, closer to 11, will most likely try and get in between the dogs and separate them if they saw my dog getting injured. And in that circumstance, I can't predict, and I don't think anyone in this room can predict how Chloe's going to react. My second concern is we use an invisible fence. And when the kids are at school, our dogs are controlled in our yard, but not necessarily If there's some type of lapse of control and Chloe makes her way into my yard and kills one of my dogs, that is going to be absolutely devastating for my eight-year-old and my 10-year-old, something that will affect their whole life. Something that I think we all need to take into consideration of what happens when an eight-year-old's dog that they've been bringing up and been around their whole life is killed in a violent manner like that. So, like I said, I'm concerned, and it's really all I had to say.
Can I ask real quick, is there a fence between your yard and the...
No, there, I have an invisible fence, so my dog is, is controlled, but there's nothing other than the woods, nothing preventing another dog from, from coming in. So, and, you know, we, we moved to the acting community because we didn't think we'd have to face situations like this. I was very surprised to read that police report, and very disappointed.
Yeah, you've got to go up again.
We've, we've had dogs, you know, all our lives on this. I had a dog growing up, Barbara has as well. I can't tell you the kind of grief we went through, you know, over the fact of what happened down at the, the video store, and the fact that it was our dog that caused it. Had it been anybody else that, you know, had we just known about it, we would have been heartbroken with that. And I can certainly understand your concern about your children, both of you, you know, for that. I have a master's in early childhood education, and my whole, whole background with young children is safety, and, you know, concern and wanting them to feel protected. So on those, you know, with that note, I think that, you know, for ourselves, as we've always, with any of our do, with any of our dogs, regardless, is that control and safety has always been one of those paramount things about getting, and I know, you know, let me just speak, is that I know about his dogs, because there's this 30-foot greensward between, but I can see them running up and down the hill and playing back and forth, and they're having great fun. And I know that, you know, so I can see that enjoyment and can understand that, you know, what you want for your children and the rest of it. The one thing I'd like to add to that is that, and I don't know how much this will assuage anybody's fears, but Chloe is pretty much a couch potato. When the door opens, she does not get up, she does not run to it, she can barely get up and down the stairs. I carry her down the stairs and carry her back up the stairs in the morning, you know, to let her out, because I leave at 6:00 in the morning, this kind of thing. This is not a dog that's going to try and scoot out of the house on that. If there's a concern, and I am willing, you know, we are willing to work with both of you, Steve and you, in terms of what can we do to make you feel that your children are safe and that your pets are safe as well, and for you as well, you know, for that. Because we are good neighbors, we care about our children, you know, when we were growing up, we cared about our neighbors' kids, and we want to work with you on that so that you have that same, that what we had as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from board members?
Sure. Frank?
I just want to clarify, when you said, when you get up at 6:00 and you let, let the dog out, you mean, take it out, right?
Oh, we take it out.
Take it out. That, that was just the word you...
No, we don't let her out, but...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
He takes her out.
But also, do you, you do have any fenced in area?
No, no, we don't. We never have. And she, yeah, she's always taken out on a leash. Our dog, Georgia, the previous dog, she would try to scoot out the door. In the two and a half or more years that we've had Chloe, she has never escaped. She has, she just isn't interested in doing that particularly. She is a couch potato, and we always take her out on the leash. She's, she's never gotten loose, she's never run around the neighborhood, it just hasn't happened. And I, I suspect the breed itself bothers people, they have a reputation, but the fact of the matter is, any, any breed of dog can kill another dog. But, you know, as we said, we don't have a problem if it's, if you say we have to muzzle her when she goes out, we, we will. I don't think it's going to make anybody any safer, nor do I think it's going to, you know, assuage people particularly. It's, it's just a shame that this happened in the way it did, and it's not what would typically happen in the neighborhood. She doesn't go after people. Thank you.
One more quick question. How, how often do you go places with her?
Well, we just got back from driving eight hours from our cottage in New York on Lake Erie. She goes there with us, she comes here with, you know, she came back with us, she sleeps for about eight hours. So what do you mean by how...
Town, town, like how often do you go to businesses, or like you, like...
Oh, my son would do that because he enjoys, she's bonded to him, and he knows, the owners of the video store and the card store in Maynard, he's taken her there before, and they like her. In fact, the video signals, not the video people, the card store people have a young child. And, you know, she's played with the kid very comfortably. So it's just something that he would do, and he doesn't, he isn't obviously doing it anymore. But that's, I, the only establishment I take her into are the vet and the dog groomer. And both times, I go into the waiting room and make sure that there aren't any other dogs before I bring her out of the car. That's just what we do.
Okay, yep, Tac.
All right, since we brought this to you as a dangerous dog here, and there's a certain protocol we have to follow. Under Massachusetts General Laws, section, or chapter 140, section 136A, you as the Board of Selectmen have to deem this dog dangerous. You, you guys all have this handout, but a dangerous dog is a dog that either, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death. Number two, behaves in a manner that is responsible, excuse me, behaves in a manner that a responsible person would believe posed unjust imminent threat in physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic animal. According to the law, this chapter, this dog has to be deemed a dangerous dog. It killed another domestic animal. So before we move forward, I think you guys, meaning the Board of Selectmen, need to vote if you believe this is a dangerous dog. Jess can, I mean, you're, you're the legal expert, so...
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Wall. I'm here with Town Council's office at Anderson and Krieger. As Tac mentioned before the board begins to deliberate, I thought it might be helpful to provide the standard for those deliberations. Again, you have sections of the statute in your packets, but I thought it might be good to just go through them. Under General Law Chapter 140, Section 157, the board shall investigate or cause to be investigated a complaint of a dangerous dog. This includes an examination under oath of the complainant at a public hearing in the municipality to determine whether the dog is a dangerous dog. Section 136A of the statute defines a dangerous dog, and here I'm repeating a little bit of what Tac mentioned, as quote, "A dog that either, one, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or, two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal." I'm just going to add the definition of nuisance dog here, because it plays into the statute a little bit. A nuisance dog is defined as a dog that, one, by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity, or, two, by excessive barking, causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or, three, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal or person, but such threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate, not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. So first, under Section 157 of the statute, based on credible evidence and testimony at the hearing, the board shall either, A, dismiss the complaint, B, deem the dog a nuisance dog, or C, deem the dog a dangerous dog. If the board deems a dog a nuisance dog, then the board may, quote, "Further order that the owner or keeper of the dog take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of this nuisance behavior." If the dog, if, excuse me, if the board deems the dog a dangerous dog, then the board shall order one or more of the following. There are seven different options here, and I will read them in their entirety from the statute, so please bear with me.
Do you want to summarize them?
Yeah, I can summarize them.
I think we'll get them, yeah.
We'll summarize them. One, that the dog be humanely restrained, but not tethered to a tree or post or building. Two, that the dog be confined, and there are certain requirements about what confinement shall mean. Three, that when the dog is removed from the premises of the owner, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled. Four, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance and other different types of insurance policies. Five, that the owner provide the, or, I'm sorry, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or ACO some sort of identification procedures that mark the dog. Six, that the owner provide evidence that a vet thinks that the dog, has the opinion the dog is unfit for alterations because of medical condition, or seven, that the dog be humanely euthanized. I just have two final notes for the board. The statute states that the board may not issue an order directing that a dog deemed dangerous be removed from the town in which it resides, and also that the town cannot regulate dogs in a manner that is specific to breed. So that's all I have for the board.
So are there any questions? Peter.
If you have a question, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, no, let's... No, I, I was wondering, there's also a section, this 157 talks about circumstances under which a dog shall not be deemed dangerous. One, solely based upon growling or barking, or so, or, or based upon the breed of the dog, or if the dog was reacting to another animal or to a person, and the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following circumstances. One, the dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another domestic animal or a person from attack or assault to the person who was attacked or threatened by the dog. This is people, I don't know, it doesn't talk about dogs attacking other animals, but the person who was attacked in the sense was, was committing a crime upon the person or the property of the owner or the keeper of the dog. The person was attacked, who was attacked or threatened by the dog was engaging in teasing, tormenting, and all that sort of thing. At the time of the attack or the threat, the person or animal that was attacked or threatened basically was trespassing on the attacking animals. threatened basically was trespassing on the attacking animal's turf or his enclosure or whatever. Those are, this is, I don't, this is, it says, Chapter 140, Section 157, and it's just talking about, I don't know what, we're all, we're talking about a lot of Section 157, but anyhow, that's, so those are, I mean, those are just sort of, I just wanted to point those out because I don't think any of the exceptions apply here, 'cause just the definition, but it's just that the definition of dangerous dog does, you have to account for these circumstances where you can't find that the dog is dangerous, and, and I just thought it was important to mention that they exist, they have these specific provisions, but that they don't apply in this case to alter the fact that this dog meets the definition of a dangerous dog, period.
No, thank you for identifying that section and adding it, yes.
So, real quick before you make your motion, Tac, do you have a recommendation for us?
My recommendation is this dog is a dangerous dog. To me, it's black and white. I, I agree with everything you read, but the first paragraph that I read under a dangerous dog, this dog has killed another domestic animal, period. It needs to be classified as a dangerous dog, but that's up to you guys to vote, and probably Peter was gonna make a motion.
Again, I'll move that Chloe, a dog that resides at fifty, sorry, twenty-four Duggan Road in Acton, be declared a dangerous dog based on the facts determined at this hearing that the dog attacked a domestic animal, causing death.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any questions about this or comments about this motion?
Not specifically about the motion, but as a practical matter, are, is the, this motion separate from determination of any potential remedies?
Yes, so you determine whether or not the dog is dangerous, and then after that, determine the remedies.
Ah, okay, all right, that's all, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, now we can discuss potential remedies or what people, if anybody has any feelings. Tac, yes?
My suggestion is that the dog be muzzled at all times. Even though she's an older dog, she's an arthritic dog, I feel for the people with kids in the, in the audience, that if in fact these kids are playing and screech and holler and whoop and yell, and, you know, exhibit something that resembles prey to an animal, this dog has unbelievable prey drive. It showed that at video signals. So at a bare minimum, I'd like to see the dog muzzled at all times. It would alleviate the problem and would take the onus off the owner worrying and have to warn everyone that their dog is aggressive dog. It would protect other dogs, which they have no control of running up to them. I just don't know how you can craft keeping the dog under a muzzle in their home. My concern would be that the dog hears the kids in the backyard playing, somehow associates that, and the prey drive kicks in, and the dog pushes the door open, or, you know, gets loose. The dog does have enough of a burst of energy that I, I do believe it could get thirty yards across a yard. And like it was stated, it, it could be catastrophic if the kids tried to break up a fight, it'd be catastrophic if another dog was killed, and it'd be catastrophic if a kid was even injured. So what I can't wrap my hands around is how do we craft muzzling the dog inside so we can be assured that the dog never gets free? But it, the easy answer is the dog should be muzzled at all times, outside of the home, and should be restrained by a leash.
Just to clarify, Jessica, looking at the, the list of actions or main actions that we, we can take, number three says that when removed from the premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled. Is there anything in here saying that we can require our dog to be muzzled at all times? I know it can, it says that the dog can be humanely restrained, but I don't know if that includes muzzling.
Excuse me, in past hearings, we had a hearing on the Booton dog up on Central Street in West Acton, and the Board did require the dog to be muzzled twenty-four seven because the dog had a history of breaking through the screen door and running out in the street. So the Board at the time did, did require muzzling twenty-four seven. Obviously, the muzzle could be removed so the dog could eat, there are muzzles that dogs can eat with, they can drink water with. I would suggest with this pit bull breed that they need a basket muzzle. A soft muzzle still would permit that dog to probably nip, probably couldn't get his mouth totally open, but a, a basket type muzzle would be the most secure way. They're used by the state police all the time in demonstrations to make sure no one just inherently gets bitten. But the Board did, I don't, I don't know the legal aspect of it, but the Board did their ruling somehow.
So there's precedent?
There is precedent, I'm sure we can find it. But because the owners showed that they couldn't keep the dog from breaking out of the house...
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that I was on the Board when we, 'cause that was what this was reminding me of, is, you know, okay, you put a muzzle on the dog, you keep him inside, and I'm thinking, what a lousy, you know, what a lousy life for a dog, you know what I mean? I feel bad for the dog because, you know, the dog is, is the victim of whatever happened to him before, but honestly, you know, I think in that case, I recall that the owners were thinking about moving out to the country, you know, so that they wouldn't have to worry about the dogs, but they had, yeah, they had kid, they had kids who they let be responsible for the dog, and, and the dog was much stronger than the, the son was, and, and, you know, was, he was unable to control the dog, so, but yeah, and I think we talked, we've talked in other cases about enclosures and muzzles, and honestly, when I, when I read, when I read the facts in, in the police report, I just thought, this dog is done. You know, I honestly thought, you know, euthanizing the dog was the, probably the most humane thing for him because all of the alternatives, keeping him alive and restraining him, are, are gonna be very difficult on the dog, and, and if there were a slip-up, then it could be disastrous. I mean, obviously, yes, the dog is old and arthritic and everything, but obviously, the dog is not so crippled with arthritis that the dog couldn't go and attack and kill pretty efficiently the dog in the store. Now, I don't know if the dog in the store was also old and arthritic and unable to defend himself or herself, but, yeah, it makes, it just makes me nervous. This is a difficult case because I think that the family has been, done a humane thing in, in taking on a dog that obviously has had a difficult life, a rescue dog with some history, and, and trying to turn the dog around and make the last years of the dog's life more pleasant than the early years have been, and I understand that, you know, instinct, that's a really wonderful thing. But what this dog did to somebody else's dear family member is just pretty horrifying to me, and, and as people have said, yeah, strong prey instinct, but you don't know, the dog is obviously kind of sensitive, and, and you don't know what might cause a dog to get sort of, sort of so unnerved that the dog would kind of not distinguish between animals and maybe little kids who are around the little animals. That's, I mean, nobody knows, 'cause the dog is not, there are dog psychologists. I think there, there was one dog that we actually, the Board actually sent to a dog therapist, and I forget what the outcome was, but, yeah, there's some, somebody out there for everything and everyone, so, but I, I just feel as if, well, I'm torn right now, so...
My, my biggest current concern is that we craft something that this will never happen. It needs to put the neighbors at ease so their kids can play and have a normal life. No one, there's no professional in the world that could tell you that this dog couldn't snap at any one time. There's no one in the world that could assure that this not happen again, and our best way to combat this is a muzzle on the dog at just about all times. As the dog gets older in years, there are, there are cases that dogs do get doggy dementia. It's very much like humans. People don't understand it, dogs start doing bizarre things, and they're very unpredictable and very hard to read. So I think for the safety of all, a decision has to be crafted so the neighbors can live their life, so Chloe can live her life. It's not cruel, it's not inhumane. It, it, it will put everyone at ease at a minimum.
Any other comments or questions? Somebody wanna make, oh, no, somebody wanna make a motion?
Peter.
Oh, yes, you guys can speak. Yeah, you just have to go up again to the microphone.
I think it's certainly reasonable, if people are this freaked out about Chloe, that she be in a muzzle outside our home, but it makes no sense to me at all to keep her muzzled inside our home. In two and a half years, she has shown no desire to break out of the house. She, her hearing isn't that great. She would not be incited by someone next door playing. It just, in two and a half years, none of that has happened. So having her muzzled inside because she might break out just doesn't fit the situation. And I understand projecting what could happen, but it could happen with any dog, and the facts just don't show that inside our house, she's a perfectly lovable animal, and we've had a lot of people come through our house, old, young, and everything in between, we just know she can't be around another dog, and she doesn't try to escape from our house. She just doesn't.
All right, Janet?
One thing, well, I think dogs, different dogs have different strengths of sense of smell, but dogs do have a much stronger sense of smell. They could be blind and deaf, and they could smell another dog, I'm sure, and they can smell the dog through the walls. I mean, my mother had a dog, she happened to be a beagle, but the beagle could be resting quietly in the house, and she would all of a sudden get all alert, go to the door and be baying like crazy because there was some dog encroaching on her turf, and, and if she had been able to get out, she would have gone straight for the dog, you know, and, and continued to bark and probably been beaten down badly, but, so I, I wouldn't sort of set, assume that because Chloe is, you know, has lost her sense of sight, her sight or hearing that she is completely incapable of knowing that there are dogs in...
Okay, we, we can't do this back and forth like this.
But I, I just, you know, I would just say that because we don't know, and we don't know what will happen as she ages, maybe as, you know, she ages, if she develops dementia, she'll still be developing progressively, getting more arth, more and more arthritic and hobble so that she, even if she has the strong prey instinct, she can't act on it, but I think that you do, yeah, we, we have to be, take abundant care in this instance because the dog has done something. If the dog had just barked or snarled, but not actually bitten and killed another living creature, maybe, and, and not just another living creature, but, you know, not a bird, but, you know, somebody else's dog, in a very kind of, sort of placid situation, it was in a store, maybe we wouldn't be so skittish about, you know, dealing with a dog, but we have to be, we have to be exercising a lot of restraint, making sure that the dog isn't going to do this again, not only to another dog, but to another living creature who's on two legs and living next door or something, so...
Okay, yes, Matt, hold on, I'm gonna ask you.
If you decide that the dog should be monitored at all times inside, how will you monitor that? How will you, on a going-forward basis, how would you deal with that?
Tac, do you have a response?
Yes, I'm gonna move into their house. I think we depend on the neighbors at that point to tell us what they see. I mean, obviously, you're not on their property, but you would know. My concern is someone comes to the house, someone opens the door, she's loose in the house, and the dog scoots out. I mean, no one can rightfully tell us that will never happen. I, I think to put everyone at ease, somehow it has to be crafted that this dog, although some of its freedoms will be lost, will have to get used to a basket muzzle. And it's pretty cut and dry. This is a unique situation, but this dog has been deemed by the Board as a dangerous dog. There's probably not hundreds of dangerous dogs in Massachusetts right now, and this is, this is a, a stigma or a title that goes with this dog forever. If this dog, if they moved out of state, this dog's still considered a dangerous dog. This is a label on this dog forever.
Tac, are you also, if we include in that, able to do, you know, random inspections, just drop by and see if the dog is muzzled? I mean, I know you have enough hours of time...
If that's what you ask me to do and require me to do, I mean, permit, time permitting, I would do that.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Franny?
The only way, I, I think the most important thing is that people feel safe where they live, and I feel really sad for the dog and for the dog's owners, but I feel like that's the most important thing. I would be comfortable, if it weren't muzzled at home, if there was a double barrier, like if they built a fence so that if it got out of the door by accident, I mean, that would be the only way that I would feel comfortable. I have a dog like this, and I'm familiar with all those things, people saying, you're, my dog's okay, and I'm saying, no, my dog isn't, you know, with other dogs, and so I know what that's like, and it's very painful, but mistakes do happen, you know, some things that you never expect happen, just like it happened in the store. There's always some unusual, you know, visitor walking by just when they go outside or something, and so I definitely am clear that I would want to see it muzzle outside, and I'm feeling sad about it being muzzled inside, and the only solution I can see to that is if there was a double barrier.
There is no offense on the property now. My concern is if William is in charge of the dog or home alone with the dog, he obviously didn't have control at the video store, and this could happen at home also.
Okay, does anybody wanna make a motion? And then we can discuss it.
So I'd like to agree with sort of some of the sentiment, but I do think that, you know, having the dog muzzled while it's outside is a thing, but I'd also like to mention that I would prefer Franny's solution of maybe finding a double barrier to help deal with the dog while it is in, in the house. I think that something like an invisible fence is a practical second barrier, assuming the dog responds to it, which I think can be something that can be reasonably tested quickly.
So, well, yes, but I'd like to ask our counsel, 'cause again, I'm not sure that that is one of the options we have. So again, we have to make a decision now that we've deemed it a dangerous dog, ordering one or more of the following things that was listed in the sheet we have, number one through seven, and I'm not sure that building another, building a fence or putting an invisible fence is, is an option.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we can, I believe that building a fence or ensuring some sort of fence setup would be, would fall under confining the dog to the premises, that it would be a measure that would allow for the dog to be confined to the home.
I mean, it says confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or a dog run area upon the premise of the owner or keeper. So I'm not sure a fence around the yard counts as a pen or a dog run area, and that, and it says, provided further that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof. So again, I don't think that building a fence fits that definition.
I thought we were talking about inside the house, though, making a secure locate, I don't, I didn't think you were talking...
I think...
I didn't think you were talking about outside the house. I took that as...
I didn't mean, I meant that it would always be muzzled outside, and the only way I would be comfortable with it not muzzled inside is if there was a double barrier, like a fence around the front door or inside the front door.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Almost like a secure location inside the house to make sure that an errant door can't be left open, it would be almost like a double door system.
I see what you're saying. That, that would have fallen to an invisible fence outside the house, I don't think would.
And while I don't think we even want to consider an invisible fence for this breed dog, this type dog, this dog with a prey drive, invisible fence would not be acceptable to me whatsoever.
Yeah.
Just, just a quick point of order, Mrs. Chairperson. In the past in hearings, the way they've been conducted, and I may be wrong, at some point, public comment has to be stopped because when you guys are discussing what, what the remedy is, we can't debate it all the time.
No, I agree.
I'm just like...
No, I, I agree, it's just on these issues, I...
I know, it's, dog issues are the toughest thing, but at some point in time, we can't keep having public comment to your, your guys' comment. Thank you.
So I will add one more. So I will add one more, and then I will cut it off.
Just wanted to say that, and this is from my own, is that a dog with a muzzle running towards a child is still going to terrify the child.
But it is not going to injure the child.
It's not going to injure the child. You know, from our standpoint, I think, you know, in talking is that, you know, because we haven't discussed this, is that we'll be more than...
Again, I'm sorry. You have to address the board.
All right. That we are more than open to talking about fences and not a, and not an electric fence, but, you know, physical barrier, both in the house, you know, for that, and outside the house, so the neighbors feel safe. So they feel safe for their dogs, and they feel safe for their children, and we feel like, you know, we can care for our dog too and our dogs, because we'll get another one too, in a way that, you know, we're good neighbors. So on that is that, you know, those range, there are ranges there that I think are amenable and possible, and we're willing to work with the community to do that.
Okay. Thank you. So I will cut out public comment now. Does anybody have a motion they would like to make, and then we can discuss it?
I move that the dog have to be muzzled all the time outside, and that it has to be muzzled all the time inside unless there is a double barrier, so that no mistakes can happen. That's probably not...
Do you want to add that that would be like upon the inspection of the animal control officer, because to make sure that this has been built, the double barrier?
I would feel whatever they do to have a double system should be inspected by myself or my assistant animal control, so that we truly believe that one door is shut before the other door is open, you know? However this is devised, I mean, it seems like a reasonable thing to ask. It's almost like having a safe room in your house.
So I'll make a friendly amendment that both the muzzle and/or the double protection for keep the dog from escaping be satisfactory to the animal control officer.
Second.
Okay, so that's a second to Peter's motion. Why don't we, does anybody have any comments on the motion, the amendment?
Yeah, I want to make sure, well, I just want to make sure that Tac feels comfortable with that, because all of a sudden, I felt nervous even thinking, I'm picturing myself living next door and having a kid, and whether I would be comfortable. I mean, I'm amazed that people aren't saying, "Just euthanize the dog." I mean, it is really, I'm amazed at how, how civil everybody is in their fears. I mean, it's amazing. And all of you, and it's just really incredible to me that people are holding their fears so civilly, because it's very upsetting on all sides. So I want to know if I was the one that proposed this double barrier idea, and am I being, just trying to be nice to the dog? And I want to know that, all of a sudden, picturing this dog totally unmuzzled inside the way you're describing it.
I think you're, in lieu of having the dog muzzled inside, you're being reasonable. I do think that we would put a stipulation that the muzzle would have to be a basket type muzzle, not a soft muzzle where a dog can still open its mouth a little bit. This would physically be a muzzle that they would have to take off the dog to allow the dog to eat. It probably could have treats through the muzzle. It certainly could drink water through the muzzle. But there is no way that a child could be bitten, another dog could be bitten. I don't think it will totally ease the fears of kids. I work with kids all the time that have been traumatized to try to get them over that and that, make sure they know that all dogs aren't mean, all dogs aren't bad. It's a pretty traumatic experience. It takes a lot of time. But I think that's our best bet right now, you know, short of mandating that it has a muzzle on 24/7 except to eat. I think your, your idea is probably a fair idea.
Okay, Janet?
Practically speaking, Tac, I'm just asking, you know, if we have this sort of double barrier, you basically have a place, an enclosure, sort of that keeps the dog from getting access to the doors to get outside, right? That's, is that what you're talking about inside? So that the dog can be free from wearing the muzzle inside the house? But it's just that in the event that somehow the dog is unattended and inside the house, that the dog, there's no way the dog can get anywhere near the doors to escape?
Yes, I would suggest that the dog should not have access to the screen door and then out into the yard. There should be some sort of barrier that the dog cannot breach, that if someone came and knocked at the door, that dog would be a distance away from the front door, and would have to physically be let out of that enclosure to get to the front door. It would not be acceptable if you would go up and bang on that door and to have Chloe standing right there. A door is not a lock.
So are we doing, we're doing this instead of the yard enclosure idea, right?
I never thought of yard enclosure. It was instead of 24/7 muzzle, it was a double enclosure.
I'm just, well, I'm just wondering if having a physical fence would provide an added amount of sort of psychological comfort for, and maybe real comfort for the neighbors? It just...
But again, I don't think physical fence is one of the things that we can require.
What? What did you say?
I don't think a physical fence outside somebody's home is one of the things that we can require based on this.
But it says enclosure, I think.
It says an enclosure that has a locked pen with a roof. They mean a, a dog house.
They mean basically building yourself a dog kennel in your yard. I would not, I would not be happy with them just fencing in the yard and letting Chloe out on her own, unless she had a muzzle on, even with a fence. The fence would be a feel-good thing for the neighbors, knowing it's an extra barrier. I, I feel it's great. I don't think that you can make them put up a fence.
So again, the motion right now is to have the Chloe muzzled at all times and outside and inside unless a double barrier is created. Peter's amendment is that both the muzzle and the double barrier are approved by the animal control officer. So why don't we vote on the amendment first, unless there's any further comment on the amendment? Okay. All those in favor of Peter's amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, and Franny's motion actually needs a second.
I will second that motion as well.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? I'll just add, I mean, you know, I sympathize, I have a, since I was a kid, have had a fear of dogs for no reason that anybody can figure out, but I, you know, I understand it, and it is scary, and I can imagine how scary it is for your kids and the concern of all the neighbors. So first of all, I want to thank you for coming, and I do, you know, again, I sympathize. I think it's hard to picture the dog being muzzled at all times, and, you know, you do want to think about the quality of life of the dog as well. And I appreciate the efforts that you have gone to, and I, you know, hopefully, what we propose tonight will make everybody feel safer and still allow Chloe to have a decent life. So that's my only comment. Okay, any other comments?
No, I, just following up on that, the owners have offered to meet with the, with the neighbors and talk about the issues. It seems to me that'd be, that'd be one way of trying to resolve some of the tension that's here as well. So I would, that's up to you folks, but they did make that offer, so.
Okay. So we're now voting on the amended motion. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. All right, thank you all very much for coming. Okay, and I'm a couple minutes late in reading this hearing. We have to do our hearing, and then we'll come back and do the facilities master plan, if you guys don't mind waiting just a little bit. But the acting board of selectmen will hold a public hearing on September 8th, 2015, at 8:20 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, on the application of National Grid for an installation and maintenance of approximately 1,670 feet of four-inch gas main in Hosmer Street from the existing two-inch gas main at Foster Street northerly to building number 71. The petition and accompanying plans can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Is our representative for National Grid here, yes? Do you mind, just so you got to use the handheld mic, if you could just introduce yourself?
Is it on?
Yes.
My name is Barbara Kelleher. I'm the acting permits representative for National Grid, and you, the way you read it, that's exactly what we're asking for, the 670 feet of four-inch gas main on Hosmer Street from existing two-inch gas main at Foster northerly to building number 71, and...
Okay, is, are there any questions from the board? Peter?
Thank you. First of all, the street is spelled wrong on your petition. It's Homer, it should be Hosmer, right? And second of all, I don't see anything in your petition about Russell Street, which it's impossible from this plot plan to figure out exactly where the heck these streets are in Act, and there are no street names here. But it doesn't include Russell Street. So I, I mean, I don't think we can sign this unless we get it amended somehow to include...
Okay. I brought the engineer, the project engineer with me, maybe he can explain some. Michael Tupper?
Okay.
Hi there. So, yeah, I'm the engineer for this project, and it's a good point on Russell Road, although the difference for Russell Road is that that's not actually a new main installation, that's just a main replacement project. So grant of location isn't, isn't required for our main replacement work, it's just for our new main installations, where we're going to take up a new corridor in the street.
Okay, the fine print on the plot plan does talk about Russell Road, but again, I mean, it's just the form of the petition itself, I think, needs to be, include Russell Road, if that's what we're going to approve, I mean, and, and the correct spelling of Hosmer Street.
Right, certainly the spelling can get corrected. The Russell Road, so it's not included on the petition or the application because it just, it doesn't require a grant, if that makes sense? I, I know there's main being installed there, but it's a main replacement project, so it'd be similar to, you know, Grid Gas does main replacement, tons of main replacements. And it's, as long as we replace, so we're going to abandon the existing main, take up, so it's not taking up a new corridor per se. This one is a second main in the street, and it's really, it's a engineering reliability project where we separate a transmission and distribution system, but that is a new main, and that, that requires a grant, Russell.
Okay, well, we have a town engineer here, so you can confirm that, I guess. The only other question I have is if you remove any portion of the new pavement, you're going to use infrared paving on it? Can you tell me what infrared paving is, and assure us that that's how you would replace the new paving that the town has done out there if you disturb any of it?
Yeah, so infrared, as I understood, it's to, it's to warm up the existing pavement where you make the saw cut, so that way you can match, it, it makes for a better match and a better patchwork, so to speak, between the new pavement where the trench will be and the existing pavement that, that has to get saw cut for the main installation. Yeah, and infrared is the, that's a typical restoration method used for paving, required by a lot of towns.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any other, yep, Janet?
I have a question for Mr. Manager and Mr. Engineer. This, the memo to us said that if National Grid removes any portion of the new pavement, National Grid will be required to use infrared paving. Is that we're requiring them, or they're required to do that under some state law? I just wanted to make clear if we should cover that in our, our order, or not.
I think, Corey can speak to it, generally, we like the infrared repair as, as the engineer had stated.
But so we should say that in the motion?
So she would, we should include that in our, in our decision, then? Is that, because I want to make clear that we covered that, if that's what your understanding is, okay?
In our existing traffic rules and orders, I'm sorry, the street cut permits, any road pavement that's less than three years old is required to have infrared, so it's covered under our existing policies now.
Oh, okay.
Do you agree that Russell Road doesn't need a permit?
They would be required to get the standard permit for work in the right of way, under Mass General law for the public utilities, typically a replacement or repair, under the, sort of the definition of that, they don't need to get sort of a public process because they're just maintaining or repairing. But like you're saying, he's adding a second main, so that would be, that's why they need to get the grant of location to have that new main in place. It, it's common when you see utility poles, where you see a lot of double poles close together, it, under the law, because they're, they're replacing and repairing it, it's something they don't need to seek public approval first.
Okay, and, and the street opening, that's just the chief of police issues, those?
The engineering department does those, yes.
Yep.
So Corey, so, so when this new thing on Robinwood needs to be maintained and repaired, they won't have to come back before us? In other words, this is, they just have to come before us when they're doing something new?
Yeah, what they'll do is, once they get your approval for the new main, they'll go to engineering for the permit, and then the engineers will oversee if they cut into the new pavement on Robinwood or the work on Russell Road. They'll kind of oversee all that under that one permit, and they won't need to come back to you guys, it'll be sort of managed by staff.
Oh, I was talking about somewhere down the road, when, in the course of doing what they're doing on Russell, they, they're eventually going to have to do the same thing on Robinwood, right? They'll be, have to do the, and they won't need a permit from us for that. That's what I'm, I just want to make sure I understand the difference between what needs a permit and what doesn't need a permit. And I gather, you know, maintenance and repair doesn't require a permit from us, which is why we're only dealing with the Robinwood thing right now and not Russell.
Yes, yeah, hopefully they don't go down Robinwood, but yeah, they wouldn't have to for it there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions, are there questions from the audience? Yep, you just come up and take the microphone and just state your name and address, please.
Patricia McKnight, 115 Hosmer Street. I just had a question, I think, for, for you guys. One, I wanted to know why the work was being done and at whose request, like who's, what the impetus behind it was? And then I'm sure myself and other neighbors would like to know things like, when would this start, and how long it might it take, and, and what we might expect for road closure.
Okay. So just for everybody, it's fine, when you speak, you have to address the board, it's okay.
I'm so sorry.
No, but just for the future, if everybody could address all questions to the board, and then I'll ask you guys to respond.
Sorry.
Thank you. So if you wouldn't mind responding.
Yeah, so the first question, why? This is, this is purely what I would call an engineering reliability project. So the engineering department, myself, you know, got to sign this particular project, but the reason for was primarily, and what, and hence the second main or the new main was, the idea on this is to separate our transmission systems and our distribution systems. Right now, the main that runs down Hosmer Street is what we consider like a transmission system, so essentially moves gas from one spot to another in a transmission sense, just like your electric systems work. And back in the day, when they would do transmission systems, if they could catch, you know, if people wanted a service off the transmission, it was kind of, it was easy to just run that service off the transmission main. Nowadays, with, you know, a big increase in low, a lot of customers, you know, a lot of conversions, we're trying to make sure that the two systems are separated and really operating the way they should, and we want them to for, like you said, like a service reliability, engineering reliability stand. So we want the transmission system to act as a transmission system. We don't want it to move gas from one spot to another to serve the customers, and we want the distribution system to act as a distribution system and basically run main and streets and services to customers. So that's, that's the driver, that's why we're doing it. It was developed right out of engineering, from our mapping systems and our algorithms that tell us, all right, what's the best way to operate the system to provide the most reliable service to the customers. The second part about, sorry, the second part about schedule and road closures, it is four-inch plastic, it is a relatively, speaking, small main size. Trench width would expect to be maybe between 18 and 24 inches, depending on sort of an agreed-upon location between, you know, the town and the engineering departments, we could get, find a corridor for the new main. You'd be looking at more, not, definitely not a road closure, probably some kind of just traffic pattern that, that avoids a construction zone. Timing is a little tougher to nail down, it depends on approvals, it depends on permitting processes with the town engineering department. This job is slated for what we consider FY '15, '16, which is essentially the constr- This job is slated for what we consider FY '15, '16, which is essentially the construction season that we're in now. We, we really like to do this, again, from an engineering reliability standpoint, before the winter, if at all possible. But it does kind of depend on, you know, approvals and going through processes like this. So hopefully that addresses the question.
Okay, any other questions from the audience? Let's do that first.
Charlie Arson, 111 Hosmer Street.
Okay.
The question I have is, there's been a lot of publicity lately about gas leaks in Acton. And is this project meant to mitigate any of those problems?
Would anybody from National Grid like to respond?
So the new, the new main on Hosmer that we're specifically looking at for this hearing is, it wasn't necessarily developed because of, you know, high leak scores in, in this particular scope of work. It was, it was definitely driven more as a reliability project. But I, I do think you get some, you get a lot of advantages by having a new main installed, getting any services, you know, services that were on the transmission main onto a distribution main that's newly installed. It gets completely pressure tested, and we tested before it ever gets, goes into service as part of our standard operating procedures. This project wasn't, they say it wasn't driven purely by high leak scores in this area. I don't believe there are high leak scores in this area. But it, it's always advantageous to have a new plastic main in the street. It's just, it's new, it's been recently tested, it's up to the, the highest standards of care that, that we've put into our new mains. It's, it's, from our standpoint, your most reliable system.
Thank you, and we have another person from the audience.
Yes, hello. Sam Lawton, 29, Robinwood. I live at the corner of Robinwood and Hosmer. Question of schedule, I think, was answered somewhat vaguely, but you expect it to be the work performed in this construction season, correct? Okay. And the question of excavation, reconstruction of the roadway, can we assume that the roadway will be returned to the condition, pre-existing condition?
So would somebody from National Grid, or Cory, do you want to answer what you guys require?
Yes, yeah, typically what they'll do is when they excavate it, they'll put in a temporary patch, especially if they get it in this year. Something that's smooth enough where we can get the plowable. And then they'll come back and do a final patch, which, depending on location and that, in recent years, they've come in and ground the patch out and put a final pavement layer in.
But that's likely to be next year?
The final patch, we generally like to let it, let the temporary patch sit a while so in case there is any settlement issues, that we address that before they do a final. But the temporary will be passable for, especially for plows, because if it happens this fall, we want it smooth. So we're not hooking, hooking potholes or hooking something that's uneven, so.
Okay. Now, mention of Robinwood Road. It sounds to me as if the work itself is intended to be performed on Hosmer Street, but there is mention of Robinwood Road. Is it only at the intersection that would be affected?
Sorry, you just got to use the, no, you can speak, you just have to use the microphone.
Yeah, there's no intent really for Robinwood. It's to go down Hosmer, and it will go through the intersection where Hosmer meets Robinwood, but it wouldn't go down, what is that, west? Wouldn't go west down Robinwood. There's no intent, it's really just to get Hosmer from Foster up to just shy Route 2.
And last question, the effect on the adjacent property? Any of the planted area adjacent to the roadway? Will you be returning that to its original condition as well?
Sorry, can you just use a microphone? It's for TB.
Usually on the inspection, through this gentleman, they will make sure that that is undisturbed, correct?
Okay.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the audience?
Hi, my name is Liz Portanova. I'm on 107 Hosmer. And my concern is actually about the large amount of heavy truck traffic that we get down Hosmer Street. I don't know if you're aware, but we actually get a lot of morning rush hour traffic from people coming off Route 2 to avoid the rotary. And in addition to that, we get heavy-duty, multi-ton trucks, trucks coming out of the car lot with several cars attached, like those big 18-wheelers that carry cars. And we've always felt that it was inappropriate for this sort of traffic on a residential street, especially one with a small bridge. And especially considering we have a gas main underneath the road. Now that we're talking about adding another one, is there any concern about that load of traffic on top of two mains on a residential street?
Cory, do you want to address it? We can only address it in relation to the gas mains, not about any other issues. But do you have any concerns with that?
I defer to the gas company, but I would, I would venture to guess that the mains they're putting in are under all levels of roadway. So they're putting in, in with the appropriate cover over it. The, the strength of material that they're using for the mains are, would be under Route 27 or a side street. I, I don't, they could answer better with the types of materials they're using. But I would have to say that it probably wouldn't cause a problem for the type of main they're using.
So, got kind of lucky with that question because that is one area of my general expertise. Especially for a small diameter, and this is high-density polyethylene plastic. So in general, your, your plastic mains have a, a good amount of flexibility. Just right off the bat, even if they were installed relatively shallow, your 18-wheeler would not cause any issues. But way beyond that, we install the mains with a minimum three foot of cover, which is well within a range of depth where even an 18-wheeler, even, even an 18-wheeler hitting a pothole pretty badly, the effects of that load are almost nearly nothing at about two and a half feet. And once you get down to about three feet, the effects of that load on that utility at that depth is extremely minimal, if, if hardly any at that point. So that is, the three foot of cover for our, our gas mains is well within the traditional standard of care for that, that type of utility installation.
Sure, you got to use the microphone.
And then one follow-up I had was that, I, I moved in two years ago, and we were told at that time that people had heard that there was no gas service available to residents of Hosmer, because even though we had a gas main running down the street is a transmission line, as you described, and not a distribution line. So now that you're going to put in a distribution line, are there any plans to offer gas service to the residents of the street?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that is a huge, that actually would be a, a big benefit that in my engineering world, I wouldn't have even really considered. But yes, once this main is installed, it is definitely deemed a distribution main. And if residents there wanted a gas service, certainly nobody in sales would be denying it because it's a transmission main. As of right now, with our, with National Grid's policies, yeah, a service off a transmission main is just, like you say, it's something we're trying to avoid. It's not the intended purpose of a transmission main. But once this main is installed, it is distribution. And yes, service would be, would be available to residents through our normal gas service application process.
Great, any other questions from the audience? Any other questions or comments from the board? Yes, Jameson.
So I believe one portion of the scheduling question that was not answered was how long or what timeframe this work would occur over in terms of how long it would take? Would it be one week, two weeks, three weeks? You have an estimate for how long this, this would cause a disruption to the residents in, in the area as well as traffic?
You can't hold me to it, because you never know what happens when, when they open up and, and excavation and they go trenching. But in that street, depending on how the, how the traffic patterns work out, and if they can work full eight-hour days, or if they have restricted hours or something like that, 16, 17 feet, you know, figure maybe 100 or 150 feet a day, you know, five to six weeks. And then you got Russell Road. Yeah, you know, I, it, and I know people always want really good durations. I, I can only provide like my best guess, and based on our average sort of production rates, you know? Yeah, I would say maybe somewhere in the range of like five to nine, five to 10 weeks, something like that. And that's just, it's an off-the-cuff. I'm, you know, I, I know what the productivity rates are usually, and that's all I can really base it off. It's small, it's relatively small diameter plastic, usually tends to be fairly straightforward insulation. Yeah, as long as you don't hold me to it, but that, that would be about, about the average, I would think.
Good, thank you. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Thank you. Just a follow-up, point of clarification to the last answer. When you open up the trench, is the entire trench opened at the same time? You said this would be, what, seven to nine weeks? But for the entire length of the project? Or is, I'm, I'm talking in terms of the distance?
He's asking, do you make the whole trench, and that's open for five, nine weeks, or is it in chunks?
You do it in segments?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's who I was going to say is in charge of this ultimately, is the Town Engineering Department. In the pre-construction meeting, it will be hashed out, how long it will be, the hours that they can start. So that's when you'll find out when, how long this, this project would be.
Okay, any more questions?
Can I just ask you to give us your name again? Unfortunately, I was interrupting the clerk when you, when you introduced yourself, so she wasn't able to get your last name.
My name is Barbara Kelleher, K-E-L-L-E-A-T-R. The engineer is Michael Tupper, T-U-P-P-E-R.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I have any other questions, or can we have a motion?
Move. I move to approve the application of National Grid for an installation and maintenance of approximately 16, 17 feet, more or less, of four-inch gas main in Hosmer Street from the existing two-inch gas main at Foster Street northerly to building number 71, with the understanding that National Grid is going to comply with the town's requirement that any, any pavement that is under three years old that is disturbed by their construction will be restored using infrared paving.
Okay, you have a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much.
I will see that you're provided with a corrected. Do you want the corrected one tomorrow? All right.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll sign it. All right, Cory, we'll just have you stay up here and get into the presentation for the facilities master plan.
Could I, could I, I'll just, I'll just kick it off.
Steve.
The board may recall, kind of the end of, in, in springtime, near the end of the fiscal year, we opted to go and do a townwide facility study. And, and a lot of it was really based on the fact that, in one of the selectmen's goals, that we do some long-range capital planning. And obviously, one of the, one of the key ingredients of a long-range capital plan is look at our current buildings, determine, you know, what they may need to move forward over the years. So in that regard, the town engaged Lerner, Lads, and Bartels to do that, a study. And they're here tonight to kind of walk through that process.
Thank you. Okay, do you guys want to introduce yourselves while Cory gets it set up?
Sure. I'm, my name's Greg Smalley. I'm a principal with LLB Architects. And trying to get our presentation working is Neil Vigilante, who's one of our people who is out in the field with us and is the technical director for a lot of the work that you'll see tonight as well. As, has been introduced, we started back in April and spent some time going out through all the buildings and looking for various pieces at fall within the definitions of ASTM, the American Testing Materials, Society of Testing Materials, for, to develop a background database for maintaining or projecting how you may maintain the buildings. And the, the final report you'll get tonight is a paper copy. You saw an electronic copy earlier. In the background of that is a live database. And that's, that's really the piece that is the, the crux and the heart of a study such as this. Its intention is to be interactive, for the staff to be able to use this as a way of projecting where costs might be, and to help the Board of Selectmen and the Capital Planning Commission to perhaps better predict when it might be more realistic financially and operationally to consider replacing a building or modifying a building, as opposed to, to simply maintaining it. So we've got a fairly quick run-through. The study description is, as I just gave it to you, its major purpose is to provide data that might otherwise go unknown to, to decision-makers and a, on a larger level. We spent a number of days out in the field looking at 19 buildings, which represent the, the greater majority of the buildings that the town owns. We did not do the schools. But we did a, a good cross-section of the buildings in town and have objectively rated them, I should say objectively assigned projected costs and subjectively rated them to their functionality and usability, which is less the intent of a study like this, but certainly becomes helpful as you move forward. We saw a, a wide range of buildings, as you, as you know, different construction techniques, different years, quite a good range span of ages. Uniformly, everything is very well-kept. The thing we look for as we go through is, is there any reason for you to have to address something immediately? And we found nothing that fell into, into that category. That's usually within the first week or so, being in the field. If there's something that we think you need to get on immediately, we will tell you at that point. We bundled all this up into, into a paper copy because it makes it easier for you to go through, make your notes, and get them back to either Cory or Andrea, and through them to us so that we can continue to update this for you and have a number of different proofreaders and, and people helping us find any of the things. In broad senses, we've, we had six, six areas that, that the buildings tended to lean towards. We have some site work in various areas. And this seems to be not only related to the older buildings, even the public safety complex has some concrete that's falling apart, it's spalling. You'll see it in some of the categories as site work for future consideration. Sometimes it's simply unsightly, at other times it may progress towards being a little bit more dangerous. So there's some issues to, to pay attention to on, on that end. Site also encompasses drainage, it encompasses handicapped parking spaces, the handicapped accessibility to a building fall into the site issues. Accessibility is the bridge for that, because some accessibility issues are building-related. And fortunately, the majority of your buildings are fully compliant or close to compliant. And the Kennedy Memorial, the Kennedy Cemetery Building was the one that seemed to have the, the most outstanding issues on accessibility. And we understand that some of that was being addressed this year as well. So once again, we saw that, we talked with, with Dean and Cory and Andrea about that and realized that there was no, no issue that needed to be raised, and so there was already a plan to address that. Program is one of those issues that towns, as they age, start to step past the functionality of some of their buildings. We put a picture of DPW there because we like the building, we think it certainly serves what it needs to, to be doing. But we think that you might want to look at, in the next five years or so, look at the offices, and look at the arrangement of what the interior environmental quality... environmental quality of that building, which is pretty typical of a DPW building. They emanated from the baby boom when everybody came back from World War II and threw up buildings because the towns were growing. And unfortunately, not a lot of them have gotten the love that the rest of the buildings in town have gotten. So there's, you're, you're probably in the category, maybe not as firmly as some towns, but there's, there's some pieces there. Utilization, Morrison House is a good example, great forethought to, to keep protecting the integrity of the town and the quality of the open space and the land available. Great building, been some good steps done to keep it from getting worse, but we were on the, kind of on the fence on how to categorize it because we don't know how you might want to use it. So you'll see it sits in a couple of different places in here when you look through it because of that. So it's a matter of whose portion of the report was being written. In some cases, the building's just fine. In other cases, the building might need a lot of work, but once you figure out what you want to do with it, well, you'll be able to categorize that a little bit better. Location is the interesting one. As with all of our New England towns, we grow and we continue to move and growth patterns take some of the uses away. And specifically, the firehouses were one of those areas that we looked at. They are, they're cramped, shall we say, for modern firefighting apparatus. They're not necessarily up to what you would want if you were building a new fire department, but we're always, we're always hesitant to say you just need to invest in those buildings. And I'll show you why when we get to the cost estimates. But it might be that it's time to look at a fire department location study, station study, and response time study so that your, your buildings reflect where you're going to be 10 or 15 years from now. And finally, maintenance. The good buildings that you have are in good shape, they're nicely maintained. The trick is to stay ahead of those and make sure that the, the people who are responsible for them are doing their due diligence over the winter and each spring to make sure that they address what needs to be done. So we list these in, in no particular order except for the one at the top and the one at the bottom, because the top buildings, the ones in green, are the ones that we feel are, are in, in great shape, they're doing a great job for what they're intended to do, they're being well-maintained, there's adequate investment in those buildings. Through the middle, where you get into the yellow, and we only have a little shade of yellow there, is West Acton Citizens, Morrison House, and DPW for various reasons. The West Acton Citizens Library is an interesting building, it serves the neighborhood, the village down there quite well. It does have some issues with ADA accessibility, but you can move the program out of it. So it's one of those buildings that we put in the middle from a functionality point of view. I don't think there's anything inherently bad with the building, but perhaps it's a, it's a matter of discussing what that might be. Morrison House, as I said, depending on what you want to do, that could go a number of different ways for what it might need. DPW for the indoor environmental quality and the office space. Then we get down to Center, South, and West Fire, which for all intents and purposes could be grouped together. They all have essentially the same, the same limitations. South and West have a bit more in terms of bay widths and area for turnout gear and that type of stuff. It might be interesting to see how the town would be situated 20 years from now, if those three firehouse locations are the, the ideal location, and if so, what might you do to those buildings. Transfer Station's an interesting one because it's doing exactly what you want a transfer station to do, but I don't know if I'd build one like that. So it's down there, it's, it's tough to figure out what to do. It's got a replacement value that is probably hundred, orders of magnitude higher than its appraised value. I think it's appraised for $25,000. And it does exactly what you want it to do. It gives you a place to dump the garbage and scoop it all up, and it gets good air movement through it. But it's a, it's a building I'm not sure is, is doing what, is what it needs to be in order to do that. Civil Defense Building and the Kennedy Service Building are down towards the bottom for different reasons. Civil Defense is a neat little building that has not seen a lot of love in its life. It's kind of been on the, the bottom end of land, of land use would be my guess, and it kind of shows. But what you can do with that building, I'm not really sure. As a, as a former town planner, I'd say that's a tough building to deal with. Neat location, neat little building, but I don't know what to, what to suggest for it. And Kennedy Service is a building that it is probably exceeding what it could comfortably do right now, might be the way to say it. It's a great maintenance building, it's a great setup, trying to get it to be fully accessible so it can serve as the office for the cemetery. Might be a little bit more investment than might be considered prudent, but that's down to an operational attitude of the town type of question. I'll, I'll say it from the dollars and cents and the cold-hearted approach to it all. It's a tough building to make handicap accessible. It's a great building, has the utility building to maintain the cemetery. So we put, priority one is now through two years out. Priority two is two to five years. Priority three, five to 10. Priority four, 10 to 20. And priority five is stuff that is grandfathered or would only need to be changed if you were to change the use of the building, and that's where Morrison House can fall into pretty dangerously. You'll see that at the bottom of it, we total these across, and it, it does kind of flatter to deceive a little bit because if you just take the total line, it seems that you would need a pretty steady investment from year five through year 20. So below that, we did a compounded escalation of 4% so that you start to have a better place from which to talk that $3.4 million in 2015, in 2035 is probably closer to $6.3 million. Also, what is represented here is our projection of the construction cost. It does not include any further investigation, engineering, bonding, or soft costs. The reason we do that is two parts. Some of this can be done by town staff and picked up through DPW or some of the building services that are available, and others might already be part of work that is being designed or has been designed. So we don't want to overcomplicate this, but you can put a factor on these for soft costs and engineering and design work and escalate that out a bit or get those costs to be a little bit closer on an item-by-item basis. Trending over time is always interesting to look at. We're looking at zero to two years, it's about $2 million that's projected in costs that might be needed. That two to 10-year, where it sort of levels out, is the area where if you had some of the buildings that were to be replaced, you can compare the cost of maintenance to the cost of replacement, and the increased usability of a replacement building might reduce your capital maintenance expenses and increase your bonded or capital project to build a new building. So there's a bit of a trade-off there. Next steps on this is, we think studying the fire stations, as I mentioned, is, is a, is a step the town might want to consider. Utilization of Morrison House is another one that, that might drive some, some costs. The library roof, which is a project that is growing out of this, it was part, it was one part of our scope, is to take the library roof and the HVAC replacement to 60% documents, which is just about done. That will allow an estimate that, that can be moved forward to fix that roof and the, the ductwork that is taking in water. The Kennedy Building Code Compliance is a project that's ongoing now. These last two are probably the two where you, as opposed to a lot of other towns we deal with, rest more firmly. That preventative maintenance planning and budgeting is one of those issues, as you do your capital planning, to start to think about maybe areas in a narrow park with the, the wooden boardwalk up there. Instead of waiting for it to start to fall apart, maybe there's a proactive step that says, seven years out, we're going to start a replacement plan. And start to build those more proactive approaches to things which allow you to budget out a little bit further. And then your capital improvement planning works off of the upper ones and our projected cost for maintenance to start to look at the potential of taking buildings offline, replacing buildings, or modifying or expanding buildings to more accurately suit the needs of the town as it moves forward. We finished this one up, delivered it to, to the town staff, who I must commend them as we did in, in the cover letter, very knowledgeable, very, very easy, made our life easy by getting us in and out of buildings, accompanying us wherever we wanted to go. We always say this is simple, if you can get us the keys to the building or someone who can get us in, and we got through the town in a very, a very expeditious time, I should say. And we're getting a lot of good feedback, and we encourage you to read through this and pick up the stuff that's, that you think doesn't make sense. There's a couple of priorities that have zeros, that's a problem of garbage in, garbage out on computer programs. If you don't put an area on a problem that you say is there, it's going to come up with a zero. So Neil has started to, to track those down, and Andrea and Corey have been very good at getting us feedback as well. So with that, I will turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Sure, Franny.
And that trend over time, what, what was that dollar figure at the left? What is the dollar figure? What is, can you say that in a sentence?
This right here?
Yeah.
Those are the, the estimated, the projected costs for all the work that falls into that priority.
So within zero to two years?
Within zero to two years, you, we're projec, we're projecting that the work that's been identified would, in the first zero to two years, be about $2.5 million. And, oh, sorry.
And so it's not cumulative? It's, it's, I mean, are we spending more and more each year? I mean, will that ever go down? I mean, so you're saying in these zero to two years, we spend a certain amount, at 20-plus years, we're spending that amount?
Per year.
Per year.
That's within, that's within each one of those priorities. So at the 10 years between 10 and 20 years right there, which is priority four, we're projecting that you'll have an expenditure of about $6. something million at the end of that 20-year span. So back, back to your other question, does it ever go down? It goes down when you take the tough cash cow type of buildings and replace them. And so then you'll find in the report, like, south, the south fire station, the west fire station are projected to be, I think, close to $900,000 in work that we're projecting might be needed. When you escalate that out, you could be up into $1.4, $1.5 million for each one of those buildings. That's when you, you start to look at that and say, perhaps we should study if those buildings are really the right location, the right type of building, and is it, is it more advantageous for us to take that money away from maintenance, which is almost a zero-return sum, and put it into a replacement building? And it's kind of like when you're running your car all the time and eventually the repair bills become more than the monthly payment. It's, you're, that's what you're looking for on something like that. It's one of those trends that if you see a number of these buildings that you can consolidate or relocate or rebuild, then perhaps you can get away from investing in maintenance and invest in, in a long-term asset.
So this was assuming that we would keep all of these buildings in use?
Yes.
Okay, other questions? Joan Sutcliffe?
So those numbers are the escalation numbers, which means they are, they are in, they are in sort of the dollars of the year that we, that you expect the work to be done in. And also, this is just for sort of normal maintenance work, it's not a, like an upkeep cost per annum?
That's correct. It's not, these are, these run from painting the exterior of Town Hall, but they don't include the, the annual maintenance, like, or the maintenance, it could be replacing the Venetian blinds. Carpet was part of it because it's a big part of indoor environmental quality, so if the carpet or the floor coverings are bad, those would show up. If the paint in the building is, is flaking and fading and is casting the town in a bad light, that would show up. So with this, you should be able to move some of the, what you might almost consider out-of-pocket expense because no one really planned to paint the room and move it over into capital planning. So you might be able to gather a bunch of the buildings and do a bid for interior painting in, in town, but in a number of buildings instead of one building at a time. So the, the, the way to make these studies very productive is to make them very usable for staff. So in the background of this is a full-access database that annually, if Andrea was ever in control of that database, you can adjust the escalation to match the construction market projections. You can, you can adjust unit costs to match what's happening in, in the construction industry, and that would change all of your cost projections without you having to play with the financial side of the model. So you can change the data, pull the project out, move it forward, move it back, and it will change the cost projections.
Okay, other questions? Peter?
I did. I'm looking at Town Hall on page 61, and that goes over to 63, I guess. Because I had a little bit of a disconnect between reading the narrative and the numbers that come out at the end. Because you've got under priority one, which is obviously immediate, the exterior wall veneer, 150K, you've got to, I assume that's painting, right?
Yes.
But if you look back at exterior vertical enclosure, it, I mean, wood siding is all it says. It doesn't say anything about peeling paint or, or, if you look at page 61, it just says wood siding. Windows appear to be wood single paint. Historic door, rear entrance installed in 87. So it was a little difficult for me to follow the numbers after reading the narrative. Same thing with the facility power generation. I mean, it describes a generator here. Is that the generator, replacing the generator?
Yes.
There's nothing, a lot of places you say meeting, you know, nearing the end of its useful life. That's not mentioned on the generator. And then all of a sudden, I see down here, well, we've got to replace the generator immediately. So it's a little difficult to reconcile those two.
I'll, I'll give you that. I might, it sounds like I've worked in all these different jobs. I was a town planner, I was also a director of facilities, and so I understand where, where you, where you might see a break between the summary, which is simply us going up and describing the building, and then outlining the work. The, the idea behind this is to, for this to serve as a trigger for that kind of discussion between the people who maintain your facilities and the Board of Selectmen and the people who finance the work. What would typically be done for the level of detail you're talking about would be a, an assessment just of this building. It would be an evaluation of the building that would have far more text and, and a much deeper run-through. But typically, the, the towns that don't have a strong engineering and facilities group are the towns that are looking for that. We didn't necessarily see the, that gap between Dean and Dale and Corey and Andrea and the information we were giving them to run through what would be a much more in-depth study of each one of the buildings. So I appreciate where you're coming from, that a layperson reading this and then jumping to the next might have trouble making the jump from one to the other. And I, I think that is the point, that it should engender that conversation. So if it came from the selectmen over to Andrea or Corey or wherever it was directed to, say, what do we need to do with this building? The background data would be able to complete that conversation for you. And it may be there's, there's some where we just say you need to do more of a study. Like the same building on, on page 73, section B, 10E, the stairs, all the proportion of the stair shaft not narrated assembly. So that, that's one of those things we were saying, perhaps you want to look at this, it may be that your fire marshal and building official already know it, and so it's a discussion that moves forward. It may not be an issue, but it's something that we flagged as we went through the, the building itself.
Okay, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but again, moving on to priority two, you've got exterior doors and grills, $400,000. That's a, that's a big number. And I see nothing in, in, in the narrative that even talks about the exterior doors and grills other than to say that they exist. I mean, I, what is that work? What does it mean, what's that $400,000 going to do? I, I would assume that, you know, this kind of information would be part of this document, but.
Well, I do sort of want to add that this was sort of composed as an executive-level summary. So there's a, there's a lot of information in the, in the priority and the, and the cost data in the database that can be extracted to look at something in further detail. A lot of, in a lot of areas, we use the summary section just as sort of a catch-all for us to just remember what we were looking through when we, when we walked through the buildings. So in a sense, you are right, there isn't a true reconciliation of what, of a firm summary that explains what needs, what type of work needs to be done within each priority, but it's sort of a, to go sort of back and forth, and the database, which will be delivered to Andrea and Corey, will give them a huge amount of information behind the scenes that's not shown in this executive. will give them a huge amount of, uh, information behind the scenes that's not shown in this executive.
Okay, so I could look at the computer data that you're gonna provide and figure out exactly what exterior doors and grills replacement at Town Hall for $400,000 means. Okay. Thank you.
Janet? Yes, they did, they kept away from us the 3,000-page version with all the nasty details. So, yeah. That's why they want feedback. You know, you're supposed to read this and give them comments back to Andrea so that you, they can understand your questions, you see. I have to say that I was really, you know, quite impressed because I did not get into the weeds. I didn't really, like, analyze whether the text in the, in the summary of, of the priorities made, it, you know, made a connection. I, I actually felt a little depressed when I was finished with this because I thought, okay, 19 buildings, and half of them, I think, should go away, or maybe a third of them should go away. And I was really kind of, I could see a connection between the kind of 1960s-era building, the fire stations, and, and some of those, the, and, and sort of the need for replacement that was probably gonna be very, very expensive. And did I actually read about one of the fire, fire stations that they don't have fire safety, um, devices? There's one of the stations that said, no fire safety. I said, wait a minute, that's in the fire station? And I thought, oh, gosh, that's bad. So they have to, um, but no, I, I, uh, yeah. This is a, this is a real sobering look. I was actually talking to, or emailing with somebody who's on FinCom, who, um, saying, you know, if you have any thoughts about, uh, long-term capital plan, um, you know, let me know, let the town staff know, let the board know because it's on our long-term goals for the coming year, and it would be nice because it's been on, I think, the list of goals in past years, and we've done, you know, nothing has happened. It would be nice to actually make some progress. So, so actually, I, you know, hadn't really had a chance to look at this before I did that email communication, and I guess I'll have to let those folks know that we have this. Um, but, uh, no, it's, it's really, yeah. It's, it's very sobering, I have to say. It, it just, uh, it makes me a little bit frustrated, though, that we have, we have some really nice buildings, and then we have these buildings, and it's the same ones that everybody talks about. What are we gonna do with them? Do we want to invest money in them to make them useful, and is it worthwhile? And, you know, the whole issue of making, making the West Acton Citizens Library accessible, there are probably some people who would like that. But, you know, it, it may be prohibitively expensive to do that for such a small space, and it could spoil the charm of the place, too. But, you know, we have a lot of things to think about, so. But thank you very much. This is interesting.
So I just wanted to, to thank you first for doing it, and said I, I think I had a bit of a different take than Janet. It didn't depress me as much as I think it was, as you mentioned, spoke about how much, how decent a shape our buildings are in and how we are ahead of a lot of other towns, I think, in thinking about these issues and planning for them. So the main ones that you've pointed out are things that we're already trying to address. So the Kennedy Accessibility Morrison, we've discussed at a board and have an RFP out to determine the use of that building. The fire stations, we have a North Acton Fire Station Building Committee, Study Committee, um, that, you know, is put together. We're hopefully gonna be more active. Um, so I think that, you know, that the priority areas that you highlighted are ones that our town staff and boards and committees are already thinking about, which is, was just a good affirmation of, of what we're doing. So I want to add my thanks to, to Corey and to Steve and Dean and Andrea as well for kind of being a, ahead of the game. And I think that this, this shows that. Um, and then just to say, you know, thank you again. I was able to look through it somewhat, but not in great detail, so we'll be sure to go through it and, and add any comments or questions that we have for you guys. Are there any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, anything else? That's good. All right, well, thank you very much for coming. Sorry, it was a little bit late tonight. All right. Um, next up, number four, the request for a grant of location of a stone wall at 96 Main Street. So we'll read the public hearing. The Act of Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on September 8th in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room at Town Hall. On the request for a grant of location at 96 Main Street, the applicant is proposing to install a stone wall on the front part of the property. The request and accompanying plans can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. So is the applicant here? Okay. Would you mind, um, I think there's a handheld mic, our other one isn't working. If you could just introduce yourself, and then you have a presentation? Okay, Lisa will help put it up. If you want to sit up here, that might be easier. She can give you the clicker. And then you just hit the button with the face to turn the microphone on, on here, on the, one of these.
So, thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Bob Tremblay, and, uh, I've lived at that house on 96 Main Street for about 27 years. And, uh, the, I had a difficult wake-up call in January. Now I'm having a difficult technology experience. There we go. Okay. There we go. All right, so, uh, this, this was the night of, uh, January 22nd at about 2:00 in the morning. A drunk driver veered across the road and destroyed my car and my spouse's car, and drove her car into the side of the house. That's the bad news. The good news is, if it weren't for the cars, that house would have been destroyed. And it's a 150-year-old house and a, and a treasure of the historic district. So, um, what I'd like to do is put a stone wall in front of the house to provide some protection. Um, this is not an isolated event on Main Street. The police do what they can, but, you know, people are traveling at high speeds. My neighbors across the street had their pole hit by a drunk driver in their driveway. This is just what's going on in Main Street. My front door is 15 feet from Main Street, so there's not much protection. So if it weren't for those, for the cars and the little granite posts that we'll talk about in a few minutes, that car probably would've gone right through the side of the house. And, you know, that's a, uh, Greek Revival entryway. It's a, it's a treasure, and it would've been lost. It's not gonna be if, once something like this happens again, it's gonna be when. So here's the issue at hand. You see the little red line there? That's approximately where the, uh, the lot line is technically. Now, I've lived there for 27 years. Those posts have probably been there for 50 years, but those are technically in the town right-of-way. They're existing structures in the town right-of-way. From an aesthetic, uh, perspective and a historical perspective, I, I work with, with Ron Reagan and the Historic District Committee, and they're supportive of basically filling in the area between those posts and building the wall there because that's what would look right. And, and that, you know, in point of fact, if you look at those structures, at some point, that was the natural wa- end of the lot line. Uh, the, the Town Engineering Department, um, you know, obviously wants to preserve it right-of-way, and, and, and they oppose this. But I think if you think about it from the perspective of the district, we don't want to put a guardrail up there, a big metal ugly guardrail. Um, there's lots of those in, in, in the neighborhood that predate the district, but, you know, I think that would really detract from the character of the house and the district. Um, so I'd like to put a stone wall there. Now, what would the stone wall look like? It would be about 30 inches above the sidewalk and about 28, 28 inches wide. And I will show you an example of a wall that I had built around my parking area. That's, that's what the wall that I just had built, uh, o- o- uh, this last summer looks like. And, you know, I, I think it'll be a nice addition to the, to the property and the district and the town ultimately. So about 15 feet away, the property line is, is about nine feet from my door. Uh, I'm asking to basically fill in between some pre-existing structures that are currently in the town's right-of-way. And I have the support of, uh, Historic District in, in terms of this being an appropriately historical and aesthetically pleasing, uh, structure.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from board members? Franny?
There's this sidewalk, and then there's, I just drove by it today. There's a sidewalk, and then there's the, the posts, and then there's the property line. And you want to build the wall where the posts are?
Yes.
So it's not really a question, actually, it's more of a comment. Should I wait? I really want to leave the opportunity to make safe passage for pedestrians. It's such an unsafe pla- place, as you know. Um, and especially when snow is there. So I would rather see the wall, either the wall more toward the street and the sidewalk, on the safe side of the wall, or see the wall actually off of the town's right-of-way. Sorry, I just, that's...
Any other questions? Peter?
Yeah, I do have a number of questions, and one of them is for Corey. If, if, uh, we allow this to happen, then there's an easement to Town Council's office drafts and, and to allow them to build within the right-of-way. Is that, is that legally what happens?
No, we're using the handheld mic tonight, yeah, so technical issues. I think it's on.
Okay. Um, the town wouldn't necessarily grant an easement. They would probably grant, um, I don't know if they call it a license or just a, a general acknowledgement that it's, it's in the right-of-way. I would, I would suspect that it would be conditional upon, um, a, a future need that the homeowner would have to then move it out of the way for whatever that would be, whether it's complete streets or something. But, yeah, we don't, it wouldn't necessarily be a legal perpetual easement, it would just be sort of a conditional license or something like that.
Okay, so I don't know if it'd be recorded or not, either. Um, you could, I mean, they, uh, Fenton built a nice stone wall. I live up on Faulkner Hill Road, where the curve is there under his new development, uh, to protect the sidewalk. And it looked beautiful until he didn't maintain it in this, I don't know who owns it, maybe it's the towns right-of-way there, too. But, um, it doesn't get trimmed at all, so it's overgrown with all kinds of weeds. It looks terrible. You could require, I'm sure this homeowner is very responsible, but you could require it a license that he keep it in appropriate shape, I assume.
Yeah, I assume you could put conditions like that, I think, in this situation, being right in his front yard. I don't think, uh, sort of aesthetic maintenance would be an issue.
Yeah. Uh, did you consider moving the granite posts back to the property line?
Those granite posts, as I said, predate, I was as stunned as anybody when I had a lot survey done and saw that they were inside. I, I think if, if you were to, um, look, look at the front yard, you would've thought, okay, yeah, the, the yard ends there, that's where the posts are. And I'm, at some point, I'm sure they probably, it probably was, but it's, it, as I said, I've only been there 27 years, still a rookie in town. But, um, you know, that, they were there a long time before I, I was.
If you're going toward Maynard, you're on the right side?
Yeah, fifth, fifth, fifth house on the right.
Okay, so the new bike path's gonna be running right behind your house, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Is there any other considerations under complete streets other than bike, bike lanes or bike paths that you would, could, it might trigger some alteration of, of Main Street there?
I mean, nothing to speak of right now. Typically, the complete streets, you get into, um, like, say, bike lanes in the road, sidewalks on both sides, so, um, you get into expanding width, depending on what the road lanes are. Typically, the bike lanes, one bike lane is five feet wide.
Yeah.
Things like that, so, uh, just, I mean, no immediate plans, but something.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand that concern. It seems to me that if the Aspet River Rail Trail is right behind his house, that may not be happening. These landscape timbers, they don't seem to have any historic significance to me. I don't know what the HDC feels about them. Would those be removed if you're gonna, uh, put a, uh, they don't show up in that picture. They are in one of these pictures.
See them just forward of the posts, the sort of white blocks?
There appears to be one kind of behind the post, too, to the west of it.
I think that's just a...
Oh, I'm sorry, to the south. There appears to be one that runs, runs just from one of the posts behind it, south, I guess, if you're going toward Maynard, right?
Yeah, for, for the most part, I think it's a eight or nine-inch timber that was put in front of the posts. You know, again, probably at the time the posts were put in.
Yeah, I'm just asking, would that be part of your, your, if you put a stone wall in there, would those be removed as part of that? Okay. I guess I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
Janet?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have an issue with this, as long as, I mean, a lot of people, um, do things in the, the right-of-way. It's public property, and they, a lot of people probably think that it's their property, and they have their plantings, and they, you know, have stuff right out to the edge of the street. And, and obviously, when there's a paving project or there's a street widening, then, you know, they freak out. But the town, I, in my experience, is usually considerate. I mean, you, you try to sort of, um, make a, sort of a compromise. But, I mean, as long as, uh, the owners understand that there's some risk, however slight, that at some point, um, maybe it wouldn't be while you're owning it, but somebody in the future might have, uh, face having to dismantle the wall for some purpose. I don't know what it might be for utility work or something, I, who knows? But it's just, yeah, you have to sort of accept that you, you just have, as Corey said, a license to be there the way that we all do, whatever we put in the public way. It's really, we don't have any secure rights in it. It just happens that most of the time, we just can go blithely along with our little plantings and whatnot there, and nobody cares, and it makes things look nice. And yes, as long as you assure us that the wall will look nice, you know, which I, I think you will, so.
Okay, Franny?
I actually feel really strongly that, uh, my understanding, your recommendation, Corey, what, in this, from the engineering department, is that you not suggest allowing the wall to be built in the right-of-way, but that it be built on private property or on the line, right? Is, did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, the engineering department, um, looked at this and wrote a memo. Um, they're, the typical tendency is to have it sort of the more permanent, uh, features be built along the line, just so that, um, you get into situations where all of a sudden we're, we're back building a, a sidewalk or something, and there's new owners, and you're now dealing with trying to relocate that, whether it's, whether or not the homeowner can do it or the town has to relocate it. So the, the typical policy they do is they stick with, um, the town bylaw. They don't allow things within the right-of-way. Under the, I mean, under the general bylaws, the selectmen have the authority to, um, put those conditions to allow them in. But the general policy that the staff tries to do is to try to keep it sort of clean. That's sort of the approach that they took with this.
So would it be centered on that red line? And according to what you thought, thought it should be, it would be centered on the red line? So if it's 28, how many feet, inches wide did you want?
About 20, so if I understand that to be the lot line, that's less than nine feet from my front door. And so, you know, now it's gonna kind of start to look a little bit like Spandau Prison or a, a, a tank trap. The wall is gonna be really, really close to the house. You're gonna have to step down, you're gonna walk through these granite posts. Now you're gonna come to another wall.
Well, the way I see, I'm sorry, but I...
It's okay.
Is that, that's where the property ends. And of all places in town, on this very busy street where there have been fatal accidents of pedestrians, and we have trouble with winter, I just can't see putting up a big stone wall. That would be a big, um, effort to remove, and that we probably would say, oh, no, we can't ask these people to move their stone wall. So I guess I repeat, especially considering the engineering's, um, opinion regarding complete streets, that it be built at the base. So what, the idea of building it on the property line, does that mean half the wall is on the land and half not?
I think it's all gotta be behind the wall, right? The line.
Is, when you say on the line?
Yeah, it would be the...
The front of the wall, the street side. So, so anyway, so I would propose that if it's hard to have so, it's so close to your house that you consider doing a land trade with the town, where you build it out far, but you allow the sidewalk to go on the, um, property side. So everybody would be safe, but you would have, I mean, people don't probably walk there all day long, so it wouldn't, wouldn't be like people are sitting and picnicking outside your window and looking in. Anyway, I was just thinking of that as a solution.
I, I mean, I, you know, while, while I appreciate that, I, I, that's certainly not what I would prefer. It's certainly not what the historic district, uh, preferred in the application. If you look sort of down the right-of-way of that post, there are probably a good 10 or 12 mature trees. You know, if this right-of-way gets widened eventually, you're probably talking about taking that house. I mean, at that, that close with traffic vibration and everything else, you know, I'm, I'm not sure... and everything else, you know, I'm not sure the house survives if we widen the street another, you know, five or 10 feet. It's...
I just meant actually not widening the street, but maybe having a berm protecting the pedestrians from the street. If there's a wall there in the right-of-way...
Ron could speak more to what the historic district would think of this, but, you know, I looked at the guidelines and the walls and what was described in the thing, and I think this is an appropriate aesthetic solution for something in 1852, and, you know, I don't know what the town's appetite would be for rerouting the sidewalk or other things like that.
Well, aesthetic, I agree. It would be pretty, but I'm more interested in safety for the sidewalk, so, sorry.
I actually think that it would not harm the safety of, you know, I think a wall was a sign of an awareness. I think part of the problem is people don't really see much of a border there, and they drift that way. You know, we have, the places where we have guardrails along Main Street are basically to keep cars from, like, driving off into the, into the escapade, but we didn't, you know, really do anything to protect the houses. And all I'm asking is for a chance to protect this house. I've been there for 27 years, and, you know, put a lot of time and effort into keeping it.
Okay, before we, do you have a question? I want to stick to, I'd like to stick to questions before we do comments, so that then I can ask people from the audience. Okay. So does anybody from the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
Hi, I'm Ron Regan from the Historic District Commission. So we approved putting a wall in this particular location for two reasons. One was the historic precedence of there being a fence there at that location, and the second was the aesthetic look. Moving the wall behind the property line would put it, the back of the wall almost within six to seven feet of the house, and it would look odd. And if you go down the street and look at where the walls are, there aren't really walls on this side, they're on the other side, and they're probably a couple of feet from the street. On the side, there are guardrails, and they are on that side of the sidewalk. They're not on the street side of the sidewalk. You know, and many places in Acton, the walls are right up around the edge of the street. So having it set back further would be an oddity in the town.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Yep, Chang Sun.
I would like to say that I believe the HDC's proposal is my preference in terms of how it maintains the aesthetic look of sort of the stone walls in town as a whole, sort of with a setback distance, while also sort of maintaining the functionality. I think that Corey's statement that there's really no plans for complete streets to utilize that space means that there's no reason to let this happen now, and if, you know, complete streets needs the space, or, you know, if the road needs to be widened, we can cross that bridge when we come to it. But it seems to me that there are alternative solutions, like, for example, putting a sidewalk behind, behind the wall, on the other side of the wall, as opposed to, you know, in front of the wall. And I also think even, based on the measurements, if you build the wall, there's still probably enough space for a bike lane, given that it's like 13 feet from the center of the stone posts to the side of the, to the road, it looks like if I'm reading the measurements correctly.
Okay. And I'll just add, I mean, I think, generally, I'm fine with this. I always have a concern, because, well, I think this board would remember that we said, you know, you're doing this knowing that if we come, the town comes in 10, 20 years, five, 10, 20 years, and says, we want to build in here, you know, it's still in our right-of-way, so you'd be required to take it down. The problem is that it's a decision made by this board, which will not be the same board in 10 to 20 years. You may not be the owner of the house in 10 to 20 years, and so, you know, Corey's not prob, Corey, you'll be here, you just may not be, you know, here in 20 years. You know, so you lose the institutional memory of, well, why was this decision made? And so somebody comes in, the new owner says, well, you know, you're requiring me to take down this stone wall that's, you know, costs X dollars, or, you know, and I've got to rebuild it. So there is a concern there. I think if we had something in writing that memorialized that we're making this decision, and that the owner fully understands that this is in the right-of-way, and that the town still controls the right-of-way, and it might have to be removed in the future, and if that's, you know, hopefully expressed to any future owners of the house, then I think that, you know, I think it's reasonable. I don't think we have any immediate plans, and as Peter pointed out, there'll be a rail trail there, so there's not likely a need for a bike lane. There may be a need for a sidewalk, but not in the near future is what it, what it seems, so... Does anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the stone wall in the proposed location of the posts with the addendum of having a written notice indicating that the stone wall is, still remains within the town's right-of-way, and that any future considerations for usage of the space may or may not require the owners to move or, to remove or to move the stone wall.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion?
I would like to ask, even though it sounds like you're gonna get the vote you want, and I'm gonna vote against it, that you really look at the idea of coming back to the town and getting even more space in front of your house, and moving the wall even closer to the road, and, and offering for the sidewalk in that area to just go on this side of the wall. I, I feel strongly about that.
Thank you.
That's a better direction, I don't know if the town would have any object, that Roger would have thought the expense to do that, but we could talk.
Okay, well, that said, let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, so up next, Kelly's Corner Improvement Initiative update. We also have Acton 2020. Are you guys doing that at the same time, or... Okay. I don't know how many hats you want to wear tonight, Andy. Would you care to introduce yourself, sir?
I'm Andy Brockway. I'm chair of the Steering Committee for the Kelly's Corner Improvement Initiative, and also Chair of Acton 2020. So I'd like to give you some brief updates on those tonight, mostly about Kelly's Corner. On Kelly's Corner, there are three things in particular talked about, content, the sort of current process, and sort of the long-term implementation piece of it. On the content, there are two main pieces of it. There's the zoning amendment and design guidelines, which are gonna deal with sort of the regulatory issues involved in Kelly's Corner, and mostly are a way in which the town can have some input on the sort of private development on private land. And then the second piece is the infrastructure improvements, in the main roadway. So within the zoning amendments, there are four things that are, I think, are important. The most, what's perhaps the most exciting thing to come out of this is sort of a master planning special permit process for certain properties of a certain size, and if they're certain, they're looking to achieve a certain density. The value of this, this master planning process is that it gets the town engaged much earlier in the process, and so we will have a, much sooner have an idea of what is anticipated, and a much more holistic understanding of what's anticipated, so it's less likely that someone can sort of piecemeal together an idea, as we've seen ongoing now. Some other aspects are that we are advocating sort of improving or allowing sort of greater density. Again, that's part, you have to go through the master planning process to achieve that density. There are potential higher building heights. We're still working on what's an acceptable limit there. And as terms of usage, we're advocating or recommending mixed use, so, which would include housing, which now is not currently within the Kelly's Corner District. In terms of infrastructure improvements, the big thing, of course, is everybody experiences is the congestion. Right now, interesting enough, the volume of traffic, volume of cars, should I say, are fewer now than they were 20 years ago. The difference, though, is that you have more traffic and more congestion, and so what we're looking, and we won't be able literally to control the volume, even if it were to go up again, because mostly it comes from out of town. So, but by adding a series of left-hand turn lanes, we'll be able to help improve that traffic congestion, and overall, the infrastructure improvements will sort of follow the complete streets policy. So we're looking at trying to get a more walkable town center, more pedestrian-friendly, more bike-friendly, including the sort of hardscape improvements to accessibility and sidewalks, as well as sort of the soft landscape piece of it. So those are the two main content pieces of it. The current process, and we've received from the consultant a draft final report, and I'll come back to that in a second. We're engaged now into outreach to various stakeholders. I guess I should back up again and say, so we've been doing this for about a year and a half, meeting with the consultants, and so we are sort of coming towards the end of the process. We are engaged now into the various outreach of various stakeholders. For example, tonight, meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I met earlier this summer with the Finance Committee. We have ongoing contact with the Design Review Board, and we'll probably talk directly to the EDC. We have, we are in the process of setting up a meeting at some point with Kelly's Corner Neighborhood. We've already had a separate presentation for them once back in January. We have ongoing contacts with the business owners and tenants, and there's one in particular I'll come back to in a second, and then, of course, we're gonna have general public outreach, and that will include public forum. The, so originally, we were intended to go to this fall town meeting with some zoning amendment requests, and we've decided just recently to postpone that until the April town meeting, and there, there are two pieces to the reason for that. Basically, we got the draft report from the consultant, and in truth be told, they weren't happy with it, and we think it needs a fair amount of work in terms of editing, both in content and in sort of organization. It's not that the work hasn't been done to put it in the report, but that just the body of the report itself wasn't there. So we didn't feel like we were ready to go out to the public with that. The other piece that's come up more recently, which is sort of a more positive note, is that we've had some very initial discussions with Stop &amp; Shop, and Stop &amp; Shop is the land owner for the Kmart site. And so we met last week with both the Stop &amp; Shop representative and a local developer, and again, these are very preliminary discussions. And so we'll have, we'll have some series of ongoing meetings with them. Again, I don't know how many, but over the course of the next year, and so it'll be a chance to sort of test out some of our ideas and get a real-world sort of sense of whether it's possible to do something here. So that's positive, that's a positive piece of news. So again, in terms of scheduling, we anticipate having a public forum in February of next year, which is sort of bring out the final draft report, get comments from that. There would be Planning Board hearing on the zoning amendments in perhaps March prior to town meeting, and then obviously going to town meeting in April. There's one other aspect to this, is that we've gotten a certain way through the overall design process, but we're very early in the design process, and so ultimately, we will need to request additional funding to complete documentation in order to move forward in terms of both the construction and design process and sort of the funding process. And so I'll touch base on how those things all tie together. So the third piece is the actual implementation, and this is really sort of long-term implementation. And there are, there is, if you look at this diagram here that I was giving you, this map here, I'm sorry, the text is a little hard to read, but there are three basic components of the, of the work within the infrastructure, and they are related to also funding sources. And so the good news, though, here is that the construction sequence and the funding sequence probably align with each other, and so that you're not sort of combating each one. So in the, in the phasing piece of it, there's a work at the Route 27 and 111 intersection, which is on the state road, so that's, that's the red in this diagram going. Then there is work farther out from that intersection on 27, and that's the sort of blue cyan piece of it. And then ultimately, there's a smaller piece, the yellow is the Community Way piece, which is now in private ownership within the Roach Brothers' Eden lot. So Route 111 is a state-owned road, and so all the work that's done there has to be approved by the state, and in fact, they're obviously interested in even the work outside of 111. But the work on 111 would be more than likely funded by a so-called TIP program, so, and that's an infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, I forget, I'm sorry, I forget the whole name of it. The work on the sort of Route 27, which is town-owned, is, would be done through a mass works program, and then the work on Community Way would be done through funding, probably through town. So the overall anticipated construction cost, this does not include soft costs. So the overall anticipated construction cost is approximately 8 million, and that includes a 25% contingency now built in for estimating contingencies and just some, some factor of inflation. Now, the big question is, how reliable are those numbers? All I can say is the consultant is fairly adamant that they do a lot of this work. They've been pretty good at estimating it. Is this gonna be the big dig in terms of a fiasco? No, because there are a lot of reasons why, in terms of it's a different type of construction, they won't run into unforeseen conditions. Will there be some sort of unforeseen conditions? Will some things come up? Yes. But it's not gonna be the big dig. So out of that funding, on this, on the Route 111 piece, the cost is approximately 5.4 million, and that's, we're looking for the state to sort of fund that. The, on the Route 27 piece, funded by, out of mass works, right now, it's around 2 million, and that's, honestly, that's gonna be a little bit hard to get, I think, based on what we know about the way the state is funding mass works and what type of projects. We could get a little help, depending on what happens around the private development, because they like to tie some public work with private development. And then there's about 600,000 for the Community Way piece, and that would probably be through town sources, whether it's bonding, I'm not sure, but that's... The way the funding for the state works is this TIP program. There's a series of steps, working with the local Mass Department of Transportation, and then both the town planning department and the consultant have done a lot of work and contacts with them. So they're very familiar with the project, they're interested in the project, and even at one point, they were gonna ask us to look at the interchanges on Route 2 and 27, although I think recently they've backed away from that somewhat. But they're, they're aware of the project and interested in it. But it's a five-year, potentially a five-year process to get the first set of money. And then, from there, the, you would do, you would do the 111 piece first and around the intersection, from, and then you would work out and do the 20, on Route 27 piece. And then ultimately, you could do the town Community Way piece. So the good news there is that you wouldn't be asking anything from the town until you knew you were doing the other work. So it's not something that sort of you need to get upfront in order to do the other work. So that's sort of it in a nutshell. We're, again, we're, we're going back, looking at the draft report to sort of clean it up, get it ready. We plan to have that done by November, so we're ready to sort of roll out sort of a more of a public effort in the early spring. And I can, we can, I can touch base about 2020 later, if you have questions on this.
Okay. Are there any questions? Peter, do you want to start as liaison?
Sure. I would, I would encourage the other selectmen to look, if it is online, I assume, is that, are the drawings, the renderings for the improvements online, do we know that? Okay. I mean, because there is, they really show you how pedestrian-friendly it would become, and there are, for instance, calming islands that would be designed coming into Kelly's Corner to slow down traffic. And it's a whole new look. And so I think it'd be good for you to take a look at that, I assume on the Kelly's Corner website. But also, I think the town, since we're in the budget preparation process now, I know Roland is talking to you about whatever we can do to kind of help get state money. I don't know if they require, you know, some, the town do some preliminary design work or something to kind of grease the skids to get them to fund these projects. But if there is something that the town can do to help obtain these grants that require spending some money, I think it would be a good idea for the town to put that into the budget. I really think that these improvements will jumpstart the private property owners around Kelly's Corner to work on improving their properties in accordance with these, the master plan that hopefully will pass at town meeting next spring. So if there's a possibility, we can put some money into the town budget to help spur those improvements getting started. I think that would be a good idea. So anyway, in terms of what, what the town meeting will be dealing with, the zoning amendments obviously need to be approved by town meeting, that's a two-thirds vote. The design guidelines, the zoning amendments do contain things like heights of buildings, you know, density, mix between residential and commercial space, that kind of thing. The design guidelines get into more details about visually what the projects would look like, and that's a negotiation between the town and the developer in terms of the final outcome of project design. My understanding is that town meeting doesn't vote on those. Those would just be like regulations that the Planning Board would adopt. And the improvements, obviously, those are just a matter of funding. So town meeting would vote on the funding, but the actual improvements themselves, what they would entail, other than presenting them as something to request town meeting or fund, town meeting doesn't necessarily, you know, vote on how wide the roadway is going to be, or where the sidewalks are going to be, or any of that kind of stuff. So that's kind of the process. I'm very excited about what we've been looking at for at least the 28 years I've lived in Acton, to really improve what is the major center for town. It needs the work, and I'm hoping that this will finally spur those changes to be done. So thanks very much to the committee.
I think Chris can probably give a better answer on the state process in terms of funding and in terms of needing requesting design fees.
So a little background on the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program. The, with the current, the new administration, they're, they've created a study committee to establish new evaluation criteria. So we have submitted the proposal, or they call it a project initiation form, and they put that on hold for now because the state wants to see where that committee is going to go with the evaluations, to see if they potentially could help us with funding additional design. They want to wait before they know what is going to come out of that, so that they're not putting money into something where they don't see it eventually becoming on, on the TIP. So what we're looking at now is, from where our design is, our engineering design, to get to a final 100% plan, would take approximately about $700,000 more. To get to a 25% design plan, we'd be looking at an additional plus or minus 318,000, that's with contingency. And from that point to 100% would be an additional 400,000. So there are kind of a few different ways that you could look at it. It's more advantageous for the town to create a final design plan and to apply for these funding sources for construction, because you're more likely to get it because you're shovel-ready. Mass Works looks for either shovel-ready projects or projects that are at a 25% design plan. But because this project has grown in magnitude, and it's much larger than it was initially thought, the legs of the project have grown to accommodate the turning lanes, and it basically, it would put the town in a better position to go out for funding. So it's, there's a couple of different ways you could, could take it.
Thank you. Janet, any questions, comments?
No, I got an advance, I got a preview, because I was at the DRB meeting, and I think probably I was very surprised and pleased to hear about the development involving Stop &amp; Shop. And I do credit people and town staff for keeping up the conversations. And I think, I do think that the, the work that all of you have been doing and focusing on Kelly's Corner undoubtedly has also created some motivation on the part of at least one private property owner to kind of maybe think about doing something different to improve the look and feel of that whole area. So anyhow, no, I'm, I'm all for this.
Questions, comments, Randy?
Yeah, I just had a question. I sort of agree about the challenge of going through the TIP program. I hope that, like Peter, you said, that we have to support it. And one of the ways is by sending people, sending staff, the same way we did with the rail trails, sending them to those meetings about the TIP would be really important.
We have actually already given them, we made a trip while we were there for the rail trails, and gave a special little quick snippet of what we plan coming down the line. So we put the bug in their ear, so hopefully they'll keep thinking about Kelly's Corner.
Also, I was a little confused about, even that Mass Works is hard to get. Did something change? Am I remembering right that when we came to the town for, I forget how much, 250,000 or whatever it was, for the study, that we said one of the reasons is because it would really increase our chances of getting this Mass Works grant? Was that the one that we were? And so did something change since then that we kind of?
I think that's partly my personal assessment, based on what I've, I was looking at, there's somewhere a document that shows, all right, here's what Mass Works done the last three or four years. And a lot of it is tied to, we'll improve the public infrastructure because there's some housing thing going on over here. Because Mass Works is out of the Department of Housing and Community Development. So there is some interest in supporting whatever sort of the backbone in order to improve the housing and/or the, obviously, the general community. So that's, I think, one of the things is going to, there's, do we have housing, perhaps, that would be supported by adding infrastructure or not? And so, I mean, that's just my quick assessment. There's not any sort of official change in program per se.
There are other categories with Mass Works, including economic development. There are a couple of different kind of target areas that they look for, and mixed-use housing is one of them. Economic development is too. But like Andy said, they look for projects that tie to a particular private development that might be taking place. That is one of the questions that they ask in the application form. So, you know, if we have a private developer that is serious, it's always good to partner up. And in the past, we've, we've been applying to Mass Works just to kind of keep our foot in the door and let, keep them apprised of the project. We've, last year, gotten a letter from the CVS developers, as well as Edens and Yvonne, who owns the whole Not Your Average Joe's and Roach Brothers Plaza, to let them know that they've been doing improvements in the area, and that there was a new development, and there's a new development coming down the line in the back of the CVS. So we got a letter from them expressing their potential development plans. And in this particular application we just submitted last week, we kept it vague, but let them know that there is a developer connect, making connections with a large private property owner. So that's where we are at this point.
One of the early consultants, the group that came here voluntarily, I forget what they are.
Oh, the TAP panel.
Okay. They, they said that the schools is a very big supporter, all the population of students and staff, and that that connection was really important, that, that path. Is that part of your plan to develop that path more?
I'm fairly certain that in the general sort of scheme they're proposing, that there's a more developed, defined path that relates to also potentially having a traffic light there. And so that, that gets into the end of conversation about Community Way, which I guess is no name, whatever you want to call it, the one that Edens. And part of the reason for the, the work there is actually for the town to assume control of that property, in part, I think, to make more likely that the state would approve a traffic light there. So there are a couple of things coming together. So yes, that's been looked at. And again, what we've seen is sort of what I'd call conceptual design. It's, it's not even necessarily a schematic design, and sort of, so there's a series of processes to get to ultimately the construction documents, but.
Last question was, what, what was that about Stop &amp; Shop?
So I don't want to oversell this, but what, so Stop &amp; Shop is the land owner for the Kmart Plaza. There's, we had discussions with a representative from Stop &amp; Shop half a year ago, four months ago, just as part of outreach, trying to make contact with all people. And so we notified them what we were up to in general terms. They, they're, of course, are always ongoing, looking for what their own possibilities are. And between them and a local developer, they've decided that perhaps now is, there's an opportunity to take a look at the site here and do something. And so again, we, Kristen and Roland had met with them a few weeks ago. We as a committee met with them last week, and we'll meet with them again. They'll put, they'll have some input onto the, our draft zoning regulations, and undoubtedly they'll sort of want to push it a certain way, and we'll, we'll see where it goes. But, you know, hopefully, hopefully something will happen.
Thank you. Ching Tsang, any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay. So I just want to add my thanks. You know, you guys have been working on this for a really long time, and I appreciate everything, and it's great to see it moving forward. I know we're delaying it a bit, but I think that's good, and will help get more public input and input from a bunch of stakeholders as well. So just appreciate that. So do you want to transition into the 2020 update?
Yeah, that'd be very quick. Really, the only real news is that we finally got approval to hire a consultant to update our website, because it's very important with 2020. I think the role of 2020 has become, I think, one of a facilitator and communicator, both between various boards and committees in town and the general public. And so we needed a better way to sort of communicate. And so if you were to go to the website today, you have a hard time really following anything. So that's the big news, and I'm not quite sure how long that process will take, but that, that will be very helpful. There's nothing in particular, there's, there's nothing particular or any policy things that we're looking at, per se. I mean, honestly, Kelly's Corner sort of sucked up some of the energy. So that's, that's, that's it for right now.
Any questions? And I forgot to ask if there were any questions from the audience on either of these. Okay. Okay, thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we're going to skip to number eight, because this sort of leads into the selectmen to call for a November special town meeting, and whether or not we want to do that. So Steve, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, obviously, when we were talking about a November, potential November 10th town meeting, the whole Kelly's Corner zoning issue was pretty paramount. I will say that short of not doing that, we do have two out of our four labor contracts settled. We could bring that to a fall town meeting, or we could wait to annual. I know there's some folks here from RAC that may want to talk about the Water Resource Bylaw, and whether that's timely or not. We have a matter of a potential citizen petition that really relates to some school policy, which would be non-binding, but nonetheless, they are circulating a petition, so not sure exactly where they're at with their signatures. They have to get 100 to get it on a special town meeting warrant. And that's about it, although there may be, I know Minuteman was curious about fall town meeting dates for a potential vote on some of their issues.
And just to clarify, because I think it's important when we talk about it, do you know what approximate costs for how much the special town meeting?
Roughly, roughly 10,000.
Okay. So Janet, do you want to talk about the RAC stuff, or is there's anybody here from RAC?
Well, I, I'm, my opinion about whether the bylaw should move forward at the special town meeting, notwithstanding that the special town meeting would be smaller in scope, is probably not necessarily what the committee's opinion is, but I, you know, I understand on the one hand that it's kind of overdue, and they're very close, and they were, I don't know if the public outreach session is going forward tomorrow or not, but, but on the other hand, we have, we're in pretty good shape, and, and there's a part of me that doesn't want to have a special town meeting just for a few proposals. One of the questions I had for the town manager is, when you have a citizen's petition, if they get enough signatures, can they compel?
If they get 200 signatures.
Yeah. And then they can compel a special, a special town meeting, regardless of, even if we have nothing else as a town that we want to put forward.
Correct.
I, I know Barry Rosen is in the audience. I assume when there's time for audience discussion, you can come up, Barry, and express the viewpoint of view, and maybe Jeff, or I don't, because I know the committee hasn't met, but anyhow. But that's, you know, I'm, I'm open. Obviously, it would have nice, been nice to have the full-blown special town meeting, and, and I think there's some eagerness to get this behind all of us, because the next part of stormwater management pursuant to the EPA's regulations is going to be a much bigger undertaking. And I think the, the quarry and all of the departments, all the permitting departments are already having to, they're going to have to start getting familiar with it. Many of them are already familiar with stormwater regulations, but it's going to have to be a much more coordinated effort among all the departments. And that's where this new person, this mythical new person that we're, we're in the process of trying to pick, might, I hope, be helpful, and not to call department heads cats, but herding the cats and keeping, you know, things moving along, so.
Peter?
I just have a couple of quick points. I actually think that having the new Economic Development Director on board is going to be helpful to the Kelly's Corner initiative. So moving it to the spring is going to be helpful, to have that input of that person being aware of all the things that are going on and helping out with that. The only other question I have is, is we, if town meeting is supposed to start November 10th, what, when do we have to?
what, when do we have to, what's the deadline, I guess, for calling?
Well, I would say probably our first meeting in October, which I think is the fifth, would be kind of our drop dead date.
Yep, Brittany. I think I asked you this, in terms of moving the money over, back to reserves from free cash, is that something that should come into our thinking at all?
Can wait till annual town meeting. I mean, at this point, we don't have our free cash certified because of all the early retirements and DOR, so, you know, definitely it would be, you know, probably safer bet for annual town meeting.
And with those things like, I love the idea of getting stuff out of the way to make spring town meeting shorter, but the labor contracts, with that, does that?
All the unions have been made aware that of the possibility we would not be having a fall town meeting, so they're okay with waiting.
Ching Sung?
Oh, no, I just really had a comment to state that I think in light of the fact that we called a special town meeting in August, if there's no compelling reason to have this town meeting, I think we should just wait for annual.
Anybody from the audience? Yes, sir. And we're using our special handheld mic tonight.
Yeah.
That's very fancy.
Hi, I'm Barry Rosen. I'm one of the members of the RAC. And Jeff may or may not be able to make it back tonight. At any rate, most of the members of the RAC, except for the chairman, who hasn't voted yet. So, at our last meeting, everyone expressed the need or the feeling, they wanted to get this off our plates and move on to the other stuff that we have to get done before 2016, because the next permitting cycle from EPA is going to start 2016. It appears to be much more onerous procedure. We, as a town, are currently operating without a legal permit. We have an extension, which is a month-to-month extension. There is a risk, and Rebecca probably has told you what some of the risk is. I have the whole list of what the fines were. The fines ranged from EPA for 11 towns between $50,000 and $100,000. Rebecca was able, who works for us in Concord, because Steve represents both, Steve Anderson represents both towns, she was able to negotiate it down. However, Concord still paid an EPA fine, and they've got some very onerous conditions that they have to operate under now, including reporting. Will it happen to us? We don't know. Nobody knows. We don't know what EPA is going to do. We don't know. We, Massachusetts, along with seven states and District Columbia are not self-regulating states. We are regulated by the EPA, and I won't go into the politics of why that is, it's a whole other story, but we are states that are regulated directly under EPA, unlike New York, where they regulate, their own DEP regulates themselves. We are regulated by federal laws, so we fall under the Clean Water Act. If EPA doesn't, you know, leave, if they leave us alone, you know, we could come out of it and we could be fine, but it's a roll of the dice. It's $10,000 or $50,000 to $100,000 if we lose, plus attorney's fees. Under the Clean Water Act, as Rebecca has probably told some of you, we are also, as a town, liable to any citizen's lawsuit. Any citizen can bring suit against the town for not, for not implementing the both bylaws that are required under our MS4, under our NPTs, which is a contract, a license, to the town to operate the MS4, which is the municipal separate stormwater system, sewer Any resident can bring a suit, and if a resident is successful in the suit, and I don't know how they could lose, since we are operating without the proper permits, we have to pay court costs, our attorney's fees, and we have to pay whatever their fees are. We have to completely reimburse the successful plaintiff. It's a high risk. I looked at what some of those suits are. I didn't find one that's less than $170,000, that the town had to pay out, plus EPA gets you for, and what the town's fees are. You just don't know. So, I can't tell you what the right answer is. It's a risk. The other thing that's happening is there is development and redevelopment happening in this town. After we pass the bylaw, it's going to take anywhere between six, Rebecca thinks it could take as long as eight months before your bylaw is effective, because, one, the AG has to approve the bylaw under the laws of the Commonwealth. She thinks it could take, it's three or four months, and the, I guess our regional offices in Boston has to approve, the regional EPA office has to approve our bylaw, to make sure it satisfies their requirements. If either one doesn't approve it, you go back to square one, and you got to go through town meeting, the whole thing again. So, if it was approved in November, you're not going to see the bylaw to take place at sometime in 2016-ish, somewhere in there. And then, when it becomes effective, then development and redevelopment take place. The bylaw mostly will affect developers and redevelopers, not homeowners, not homeowners that do not have, unless they have a parcel that's within a water recharge area of Zone 1, which is a 200-foot radius of a well, or they're in a Zone 2, which is the area that recharges a well, roughly, it's like 180 days. So, the bottom line is, it's a crapshoot, but there's two positives. One, you prevent losing one end and paying out money. The committee gets to move on to something else, and you've also begun the second bylaw that's required to regulate development and redevelopment of what happens to your stormwater, and ultimately, the runoff that affects your drinking water, Acton depends 100% on runoff for its drinking water. We have no bedrock wells. They're all shallow, sand drinking wells, what they call gravel wells. The most productive wells we have, only two or three are operational now, only can pump about 200 gallons a minute. That's the best we've got. That's why this town's got like 21 well sites. Not all are operating correctly anymore. Some of them are getting pretty old, so we have to optimize all the water that goes into those wells. So, you guys got to make a decision, and you got to make it pretty soon. The bylaw is pretty much done. Rebecca has reviewed it twice, fixed it, and Steve Anderson, her boss, has reviewed it, and we basically have the final copy here. Town staff has had their inputs. Virtually everybody has had their inputs, except we're waiting for more public. We've had one, we're going to have another public outreach to see if there's any more, and there's a developer that's going to get to see the bylaw. The same one that's looking, working with Stop &amp; Shop to get some direct feedback. But other than that, we don't anticipate much, if any, changes to the bylaw. We did not take a very detailed approach, as Sudbury did, which is very restrictive. We kind of were middle of the ground after, and I won't go through the whole slide shell, but basically, we pretty much looked at what other towns did, towns that were similar to us. We looked at very stringent towns like Sudbury and Wayland, and then we looked at towns that were a little more liberal. We didn't look at towns that weren't like Acton, like the Cape or the Charles River Basin, which are very restrictive towns. We weren't that onerous. So, we're kind of in the middle, trying to protect Acton as much as we can, and that's why most homeowner, most homeowner properties, parcels are exempt. So, you've got to decide if we're going to try to go through with it, or if we're going to wait for April. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Barry. So, and I just want to add, just to clarify for some people, we, so Rebecca works with town council's office, and we reached out to her to ask her about concerns of delaying and waiting till annual town meeting, and she expressed, you know, the concerns Barry has, or noted that, you know, it, it does leave you vulnerable, but also pointed out, I think there is some mitigation to, we would be able to say, listen, this is ready, and we're ready to put it on our April town meeting. We've planned for this, for this warrant. So, you know, there's, I think we could say, a reasonable person would say, there's not a huge difference between doing it now and five months from now, if it's all ready to go. You don't know how reasonable everybody at EPA is. So, again, it's, it is a crapshoot, and it's up to us.
Or a citizen.
Or a citizen, yeah, I'd hope.
What did you restrict them? They just got, again, something to say, do it, or the EPA, and then it's over.
Right. So, I'll, you know, all that has to be taken into consideration. We don't have to make a decision tonight if people want to wait, for whatever reason. I think we just are, you know, if people feel like they're compelled to call a special town meeting, let's call it tonight, and otherwise, I think we'll revisit it at our October 5th meeting and make a final decision. And we can see where the citizen's petition goes and all of that. So, is anybody feeling like they really want to call a special town meeting for November?
That, does having it, does, having the meeting limit the ability to be sued?
So, we would have the buy, we would have passed?
Well, I mean, I did ask that question to Rebecca Lacy. I mean, she thinks it would help if, in fact, it's on the warrant, whether it's special or annual, but once again, I mean, there's no guarantee. I think the next report to EPA is due May 1st, so, you know, in either scenario, as Barry just outlined, between the AG and EPA, in either, either town meeting, they probably will not have approved totally the bylaw by maybe the May 1st deadline. So, technically, even though we have a bylaw, it's still not approved. So, you know, either way, I mean, it just, you know, it's kind of like the Dirty Harry movie, do you feel lucky? You know, I don't know how to advise the board. There's a lot of moving parts, and, you know, our neighbors in Concord got fined a few years ago, and, you know, there's a risk.
I mean, I do think that Concord was being used as an example, and, you know, it wasn't as, I don't think a lot of communities have been fined among, but I think, I think that it's been a while. I don't know, Barry maybe knows whether.
11.
11 out of, and then, you know, what I don't know is, you know, how many communities have, are in our, the position we are in, and how many communities have complied. I mean, Sudbury did comply fairly early, and as Barry said, they had a very strict bylaw, and they ended up, they had to modify it because it was too strict, and it was causing a lot of problems in town, probably mostly on the commercial side, but that's because that's where it's going to have the greatest impact. There's a part of me, you know, I understand, I would like to get rid of it, on the other hand, because there are other things that we all need to do, but I, I also wish this person, this magical person were in place, because, you know, I'm hoping that this person will know something about stormwater regulations, too, because the person will have to learn, if not. It would be great to have that person in and kind of be involved in the process of getting it approved at town meeting, which would be possible if it were in the spring. The fact is also is that, you know, this, the, the permit that is in existence, which actually, you know, they're five-year permits, it sort of should have ceased to exist in 2008 and been replaced, and EPA's only, last year, gotten around to issuing the draft new permit, and so, they're, they're also sort of lagging, and in the time that we haven't had a new, this second bylaw in place, maybe we've been lucky. I mean, it's been a number of years. So, yeah, it's, it's very difficult, and I do wish that we had gotten this done earlier, so we wouldn't have to be facing this conundrum. But I just, there's a part of me that really, as Ching Sung said, we had this special town meeting in August, and now we're going to have another special town meeting in November, and I was okay with doing it if there was going to be a really, a lot of big things to deal with, but it, I'm torn. You know, on the one hand, I want, I want this to be done with, because one thing that we will have to discuss is what RAC is going to do next, because this was, they're an advisory committee, and this project was one that the selectmen, before I joined, assigned to them. And, and so, they were, they were originally supposed to be doing something rather different, having to do with the, really, the sewer-ing in Acton, and they got pulled off to work on this bylaw. And they actually worked on the first bylaw, and then they worked on this bylaw. And so, it's, it's not even clear at this point to me that the purpose that they started out working on is, is really one that they should go back to working, working on. We need to consider what it is that we need to do with what they were doing originally, whether we need to update that, so anyhow.
Okay, so, but I'm hearing generally that there's not a sense of the board that wants to call a meeting tonight. So, I think, unless anybody tells me otherwise, we'll postpone this and bring it back for a final decision on October 5th. Okay. Okay, I'll take care of that. So, number seven, report on the August ALG meeting. This is really to discuss the idea of a three-board meeting. I think most of you were at the August ALG meeting. So, Steve and I met with Superintendent Brand, the chair of the school committee, Christina Richlich, and the chair of the Acton FinCom, Mike Majors, back in, beginning of August, yeah, something like that, to talk about the idea of holding a tri-board meeting and what that would look like. And what we sort of tendatively agreed to was to have just our three boards, not include the Boxborough Board, so the Acton Finance Committee, our board, and the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee meet. We're thinking now sometime between, what we were going to say, special town meeting, sometime in November. Or no, we moved that now to late October. Yeah, late October. Yeah, and that we would start with sort of, part of it is that we think there's benefit to the social aspects of getting to meet people. There are a lot of new school committee members and a lot of new finance committee members in particular, and that we would do a team-building activity with a facilitator, probably hopefully BART, who facilitates ALG, and that then, the, both the schools and the towns would do kind of a municipal and school financing 101. It's something that we do for new members of our board and for new finance committee members. The schools don't necessarily do that separately, but it's a good chance just to kind of give an overview of what our financing is like, you know, what our perspective is and some of the big issues we see, and then to go over each board's goals. So, that would be our voted goals, the school committee is working on voting their goals, and for the FinCom, it would be to review their point of view. So, the school committee has kind of agreed to this. As far as I know, the finance committee has kind of agreed to it, and so, I just want to make sure people on this board feel comfortable with that idea. And then, Beth in the superintendent's office will put out a doodle poll and try to get a date out there. So, does anybody have any concerns or questions? Janet?
It sounds, it sounds like an improvement, because I know earlier, there was talk about the school, school committee wanted to do something very school-related, and, and I thought, well, what about the municipal side, you know?
Yeah, so this would be a way to make sure everybody's, it's not just from one perspective. I think the one we had last year was also a bit of a, you know, it wasn't as useful necessarily, or, you know, so I think this is a way for everybody to kind of be able to get some useful information, get to know each other, you know, and have what's.
And it's good that you're involving BART, because.
Well, we haven't, we floated the idea. I don't know if he's on yet.
He's aware of our desire.
He's aware, yeah. So, we'll see if we can bribe him to come out here. Okay, excellent, so we'll report back. All right, consent agenda. I will read through these. Please say hold if you have any, you'd like to hold. Number nine, request for waiver of fees, Iron Horse Farm. Number 10, approve, actually, I wanted to hold this. Number 10, approve updated common victualer license. Number 11, approve updated entertainment license. Number 12, request for placement of sign, Acton Women's Club. You want to hold that, Bob? Okay. Number 13, approve amended site plan, Acton Plaza. Number 14, approve meeting minutes, August 3rd and 11th. Number 15, approve executive session minutes, August 4th. Number 16, positive spin for ALS, September 27th. Number 17, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Donnell Shaw at NARA. You want to hold that one? What are you, all right. Number 18, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Jocelyn Bellevue Exchange Hall, September 26th. Number 19, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Patricia Connolly, Nagog Woods Clubhouse, October 24th. Number 20, committee appointment, Barbara Wilson, full member, senior disabled tax aid committee. Number 21, committee appointments, Community Preservation Act Study Committee, Roland Borden, Karina Roman Cruz, Ray Kubey, Paula Goodwin, Bridgette Matts, William Plower, and Kenneth Seiya Hughes.
I'm going to hold that.
Number 22, committee appointment, site plan, special permit committee, Ann Chang, JD Head, Kim Montella, and Derek Chin. Good with that one? Okay. Number 23, approve 2016, and, oh, what? Okay, I didn't finish reading it. Wait, you want to hold number 23 or 22? Okay. Okay, lots of holds on 23. Number 24, authorization to spend $50,000 from Concord Muse for Selectmen's discretionary fund for ass. Fund for Asbit River Rail Trail Right-of-Way mitigation. Mouthful. Number 25, Department of Public Works Fee Recommendation for Compost bins at Transfer Station. Okay. Number 26, disclosure, disclosure of conflict of interest for Andrew Brockway. Number 27, conservation restriction, Pulte Homes of New England LLC for Quail Ridge. And number 28, request dispo of obsolete items, Act of Memorial Library. Okay, so why don't we, well, my one on number nine, request for waiver of fees, I, it was very vague, they were just, maybe I missed a page, but it just seemed to say, we're requesting a waiver of fees and I didn't know what fees, whose fees. Oh, okay, yeah, that was not made clear, and then was there anybody in town that weighed in on that? I mean, who would, usually, you know, if it's like recreation fees, they would, Recreation Department would say, and, and I didn't know the date for this, I mean, there was just like, no, they didn't provide any information. So personally, I have a concern about waiving an unknown fee for I don't know what.
I mean, we could, I mean, if it's liquor license, have we, have we waived liquor license fees before for, for nonprofits? It just, I know we waived them, you know, the fees at NARA for, you know, fundraisers and things like that.
But they provide info about the date and what it is they're doing, this just said like, hey, can we waive fees? And I was like, well, what for?
When is, they don't have, they didn't have the event? It's October.
Okay.
Do, do we have time to go back to them and ask some more information?
Yeah, so I'd like to, I'm going to move that we, well, I don't want to say not approve, but I'm, I'm going to move to re, but I'm going to move to deny it tonight and they can reapply, because otherwise there's no way to do that.
Second.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so can you just ask them to give us some sort of info? Okay, uh, number 12, Bob, I believe he had a...
Uh, Bob Ingram, Quaybuck Road. I'm wondering why this is on a, why this is on a consent agenda. Uh, there are other signs that go on Town Commons and they don't ask for permission from the board. Why is this one?
I think they, unless it's like a town, yeah, unless, unless it's like a town group putting a sign, they, they're supposed to get permission from us.
They don't?
Well, we will do a better job of enforcing that in the future, but the Act of Women's Club is doing the appropriate thing because you are supposed to get approval for signage on the Town Common.
Uh, the request says, it, 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 we, the annual request from Women's Club to put a temporary sign on the Con Town, Town Common, as per BOS policy, it would not be placed on the Monument Triangle. I don't, I'm not even sure where that is now, but...
The width of Town Main Street, that stretch, a lot of people's front yards are the Town Common.
So they put it in front of like the Red House, right?
Right.
I think that's where they usually put their sign. So they do this like every year.
Well, I, I understand that, but other people put signs on Town Common and they don't have to come before you.
Sure, so those people are doing it illegally and we should better enforce that, but I'm not going to not, you know, yeah, I mean, there's nothing I can do about that tonight.
Are you aware of that, Steve, that if, if some town staff see an unapproved sign, they should go and take it down, shouldn't they?
Uh, zoning enforcement usually does, but, you know, you don't see the malls.
They don't usually take them down.
All right, we will get better.
Scott has to take them down.
I mean, it's, it's a real problem in West Acton, it's just, you know, there's, because, and, and I don't know if it's that the town center is, you know, more, um, obvious and, you know, it's hard to put a sign up without somebody noticing it, um, especially in Town Hall, um, but, yeah, the, the Town Common policies, yeah, Board of Selectmen policy, and that's one of the two projects that I have, that I have all the copies of all the town, the BOS policies, because nobody knows about them, they're not on the website, um, half of them expired under their own terms and a good number of the rest of them really need to be overhauled, um, and then we certainly need to get them on the website because, you know, even some selectmen don't know that they exist. Christine used to know and she had them and, and, so, in any event, but the, the Town Common control is, is clearly under the, it's under the BOS's purview. Other signs elsewhere are under the purview of the zoning enforcement officer, so, um, and sometimes I, I think that I was trying to clean up the Town Common policy and was working with Dean Charter and Roland and, and defining the Town Common is complicated and defining what can go there was complicated, so we decided to just leave it for now, the way it is, which is that everything comes before, is supposed to come before the board, so whether or not it does is something else, so...
Yeah, well, so anyways, we'll, we'll deal with that. If we see them from now on, I'll rip them out, Bob. You give me a call, okay? I'll come down and rip out a sign. More than happy to do it. I'm actually not, well, I, whatever. Okay, number 17? So, I think that was you again, Bob, yeah?
The application that was submitted was not signed.
All right, we'll get it. How would you feel if we made a motion to approve a contingent on the application being signed?
It's not for me to decide.
Okay, I didn't notice that, um, but I'll take your word if it's not, um...
Could I, is that the one that, it just, I just noticed that it said the number of adults and I thought we should be clear always about the number of people? We always have trouble with this.
Yeah, that one did say number of adults as opposed to...
So we really, you know, if there's more than 50 people, you need a tip-certified bartender and then they named the number of adults for some reason, anyway, I, I didn't, I wasn't going to be picky and mention it, but, I don't know if that's that one, was it that one?
The one I've got in our package is signed.
Yeah, you know what, you know what I think happened? You can see it's really faint, I think that it's just that it didn't come out in the printing. I think it just was signed in probably a bad pen, someone got copied, that you don't see the signature.
I didn't see the signature, the red?
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm pretty sure there is one on the original copy. I mean, I can say, we can, yes, this is also the one that says just 30 adults.
It's, I mean, I, I don't want to...
You're looking at the copy of the packet and it's signed, so that it's signed.
Yeah, the copy in our package online, you can see the signature.
I think just when it got printed and copied, you can't see the signature, because I can see it really faintly on there. Okay. So is everybody okay removing the holds, just going forward with it? Understanding we should try to encourage people to say the total number of people, we're working on improving this anyways, but we'll... Um, okay, Peter, you held number 21.
Are we going to move to approve that or do you want to, do you wait until the end?
Well, I'm going to wait to remove all the holds.
Number 21, I just have a mistake in the spelling of Roland Bourdon's last name, it's B-O-U-R-D-O-N instead of D-E-N, which is the way I spell it, so I make that correction. You certainly have a constitutional right to have your name spelled correctly, so I want to make sure that's accurate.
Okay, do you want to move to approve that one as amended? I'm just doing ones that need to be...
Sure, I'll move to approve the committee appointments to the Community Preservation Act Study Committee, um, with the correction of Roland Bourdon's last name to be B-O-U-R-D-O-N.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, Franny and Charlie held number 23. Franny, what was your concern?
I wasn't, I'm, I'm going with what the RAC department thinks is a good time to have it, so I'm going along with it, but they mentioned that it went really well, all the traffic this year, and my experience, um, was the opposite. I had guests who came from, out of town and came to the event and I had parking at the NARA park itself, but they parked in the parking lot and I warned them, I said it takes a long time to get out, but I couldn't believe that when they called me at 11:30 and they were still waiting to get out of that parking lot, that we need to do something different, like maybe open up the way through Nagog Village or something to, to empty that lot faster. So, so it said as part of this discussion that it went well and I just wanted it to go down in record that I don't think the parking does go... What?
Is Steven a cop car? Take, no, I'm just kidding. Um, well, I think that this is really just setting the date, I think that's something you can definitely provide to them, but let's do that at a separate time, but I appreciate the comment. Charlie, what was your concern?
Uh, Charlie Aronson, Hansmer Street.
That was a good...
I hope you, you appreciate the irony of this, some years ago, our Congress moved a whole bunch of our holidays from whatever day of the week they fell on and placed them on a Monday, and now we're attempting to move the 4th of July or Independence Day from a Monday to a Saturday. I think that has a lot of special meaning for, um, the veterans in town and I think that if you listen to them, they'll also tell you, it's not the 4th of July, it's Independence Day, and if you're going to have an Independence Day celebration, I think it should be on Independence Day.
I, okay, I appreciate that feedback, um, I think part of it is, you know, when the Recreation Department determines a date, they're trying to do it on a day that, you know, everybody can, that the most people can come to it and that it frees them up to attend other Independence Day events and, uh, you know, it, there definitely are pros and cons to, to both, but I appreciate your concern.
Yes, it is, but, but the Monday is a holiday.
Correct.
And people can make it, it's expedient for some people and it'll make it easier to move it to a Saturday, that's what I read into the memo that they wrote, but it's not Independence Day.
Right, correct. Yes, sir.
And the Saturday is only a day of convenience, not a day of recognition.
Okay, does anybody here have concern?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to, they, they have, Recreation has, it's their reasons for, for doing that and, and, you know, honestly, the, well, what we're doing at NARA is, um, not a very solemn occasion, I think that people are kind of paying homage to it, but, you know, it is more, it's, it's, it's more than that, I mean, it's just, yeah, it's Independence Day, but it's also a day when people can enjoy themselves in recreation. I mean, I don't think Recreation is being disrespectful in trying to change the day of celebration, the celebration is still going to incur on the 4th, 4th of July, it's just on, on Independence Day and, and there will be observances throughout the country on that day. I mean, in our town, our, the people who are putting on this, this function, uh, have been doing this for a while and they, they've discovered that there are certain things that work better and, uh, you know, we could just say, okay, well, if it's going to be too much of a hassle to do it actually on the 4th, then we should just not do it, because we're one of the few communities that I know of that actually does all of this stuff and it's very special for a lot of people and I think there are a lot of people in our town and elsewhere who would be sad if we didn't do it because it became a headache to do it always on Independence Day, so, um, and, yeah, I, I agree, I'm, I'm old enough to have, to been around when some of the President's Day didn't exist, people knew when Lincoln's birthday was and George Washington's birthday was and Veterans Day was, you know, it wasn't, you know, a Monday that gave you a long weekend, um, but, uh, obviously, and, and Veterans Day especially, you know, it's just, it's just become a, another, another extra day and you would think that there would be more respect for that, but it's, yeah.
Not if you're a veteran.
Yeah, I know, but it's just obviously some, some people have decided it's expedient to, you know, change the day when people get off and, but, uh, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm inclined, I, I respect what you two fellows are saying, but I, you know, I do, uh, think that Recreation doesn't do, do these things without some thought as to, well, things like that. I mean, we certainly can let Recreation know that there has, is some concern about, uh, changing the day and the disrespect to people, especially, uh, people who are veterans and others for whom that day is really special, um, but, um, I, I don't want to force Recreation to do it on the 4th if it's going to be a real obstacle for them. I, you know, I, I would like them to continue doing it and I, you know, I think they have good, some reason for doing it and we can send them the message, but, you know, I, I'm inclined to sort of defer to them and, and if you, obviously, you're, you're welcome to let them know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep. We wouldn't want to, even though we want to have celebrations, to have fireworks on the night, on the Monday night, wouldn't really work, especially if it takes you till 11:30, well, because I think we'd lose a lot of our people if they...
Have worked the next day.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, I was going to say a school night, but it's not, it's a work, school night, I don't know. And even Boston probably does it Sunday night, I'm thinking, right? I mean, Boston is on the...
It's not a school night, because school's out. Okay, it's 11 o'clock at night. I appreciate everybody's concern.
All right, let, let me just say I am a veteran, um, I, I don't think I have the same attachment as a veteran to Independence Day as I do to Memorial Day or Veterans Day, so it, it's more of a patriotic holiday, I think, than a day to honor veterans who served our country, uh, that's Memorial Day and Veterans Day, so I don't feel that strongly about it being, yeah.
So I think this points out that there's mixed opinions and I appreciate both of you guys bringing this up and I encourage you to contact the Recreation Department and if they do feel we can always come back and, and change the date, but I think at this point, uh, you know, we're, this board is recognizing that there are reasons that they've chosen to celebrate it, we've done it off of the 4th for, you know, of, on various years now, um, so again, I, I appreciate it, but I think, you know, I encourage you to contact the Recreation Department, um, but I don't think we're going to change that tonight. Um, okay. Number 25, you held, Franny?
I just want to make sure that we, did we put that out? How did we cho, did we put it out to bid to, before we chose?
State contract.
So they put it out?
State puts it out, that's, that's the cost.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
They get it through DEP, through DEP.
Okay, so, um, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items number 10 through 20 and number 22 through 28?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any other questions or concerns? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, were there any questions about the Selectmen's reports? Excellent. Oh, okay.
I had an addition. I had addition to mine, um, well, it was a sort of reminder that, um, of the September 28th, you know, we discussed it a lot and I mentioned it in my Selectmen Report, um, and the fact that we're talking about Senior Center on September 28th, um, so that somebody on the Senior Center Board put out a form offering rides to people who needed help and, um, and reminding people. I also wanted to say that today, this, this just was done today, the possible routes to just get people thinking about where the new bus is going to go, which is starting in October, were put up on the website, the town website today. There was a little glitch at first where it was asking people for a login, which they didn't have, I'm hoping that's changed, so if people go to the town website and look for that location to, um, comment on the bus route, which I encourage everybody to do, um, because there's only money for one route, so it's very important to look at that, um, then be patient if you have trouble getting in.
Okay, excellent. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Okay, thank you all very much.